Second.
All in favor of opening the work session?
Aye.
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 Yeah, there's Mr. Barbaria.
All right, I was putting together an email.
Correct. Uh... Barbaria had an issue he wanted to address in the executive session. Let's get to that and get that out of the way. What was the...
Wait, are we in executive session?
No.
Not yet.
We have the... The nomenclature. What was that?
105F.
105F. To discuss personnel. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
To discuss personnel.
And make a motion that we adjourn it to executive session under New York State office's law 1051F to discuss the employment history of a particular person in those manager's office. Okay, made the motion.
So moved.
I second it. No, no, I made it. I made it.
You made it, then I'll second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yeah.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Hatches?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Pam Murphy?
Aye. Okay, I'll see you all in executive session.
There's also a small claims assessment.
I realize that being a regular babysitter at care.com would be quite a baby sitter for you, just right for you. Join now, care.com.
All hope for the best for you and your family. The best.
Alright, fine. Don't leave the table till you finish.
Fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
To the best of our home, it's Christmas, so let's cheer up, all the presents we've ever had.
I'm here, just no video.
I'm there is on Dan and Nora is on.
All right, good evening. For those who are just tuning in, this is the Village of Amerenic Board of Trustees work session. We have been in executive session and we are coming out now, no actions were taken that needed to be reported in executive session. Mr. Barbario is not here tonight, so the role of village manager will be played by Dan Sarnoff, almost the Sarnoff.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is a proposal for court consolidation. One of the backups is that Portchester has done this recently. And they've given their court functions over to the town of Rye. The town of Rye is where Portchester resides. The Village of Amerenic, of course, is a little different. Forty percent of our community resides in the town of Rye. Sixty percent of our community or thereabouts resides in the town of Amerenic. The law states that if a village court were dissolved, that the functions would then have to be subsumed by the town courts. Mr. Spalzino.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions for you. Before we even go down this road, that maybe we can get a kind of bracketed in. Since in the Village of Amerenic, as opposed to Portchester, the Village of Amerenic judges are elected officials. Would it require a permissive referendum of the community if at some future date somebody wanted to dissolve the court? Because they're elected officials and it's taking away the power of an elected official.
Yes, the dissolution of the village court is subject to permissive referendum.
Subject to, is it mandatory?
It's not mandatory referendum. It's a permissive referendum.
So permissive referendum, just so for folks watching, permissive referendum is A, if the board of trustees votes to make it a referendum. Or B, if a number of electors sign petition to make it.
Right, no, the board wouldn't, couldn't make it a referendum. The board would, if the board dissolved the court, acted to dissolve the court. If twenty percent of the eligible voters, or twenty percent of the registered voters in the village presented a petition to stop that, then there would be a referendum.
Okay.
So we don't, so we, so we don't need a referendum to dissolve the court?
No, well, you don't, you don't need to schedule a referendum, you do it. You don't, you don't need to schedule a referendum, you do it, but it doesn't happen. If somebody files a petition within, I think it's forty-five days. Then there has to be, then, then the dissolution doesn't occur until the referendum has been held and has approved the dissolution.
Okay, but my question is, there's no mandatory?
That's right.
Okay. My, my, my next question is. I guess for the village manager's office, are we going to do, I don't expect you to have this information now. But it's information that you really have to have to do a proper analysis. A cost benefits analysis on if we were ever dissolved the village court. What does it bring in? What is the cost to operate? Do we have that?
We don't have that, but if you dissolve the village court, your expenditures are gone, you still get whatever revenues are generated in this municipality. That's the law of doing it. Of war.
Did everybody hear what all you said?
I did, I found it rather fascinating.
So you're telling me that if we dissolve the court, whatever the fines are that come from actions within the court violations within the village, regardless of whether it's in the town of Amerenik or town of Rye, go back to the village and there's no expenses associated with that?
Not that I'm aware, sir. Obviously, that would have to be.
Yeah.
Checked. And then we'd have to talk to the police department to see what the impact would be on the operation of the police department. Right now, they have a one-stop shopping. They have the perpetrator and the holding zone, they just dance them right down the hall.
They have to go to two courts?
Depending.
Yeah, depending.
Arrested me. Well, although, can they, if, let's just say somebody gets arrested in Rhineak, right? And they want to arraign said person, right? Can they just go to the town of Amerenik to arraign him or?
There are, there are rules for doing arraignments in differing, well, the basic rule is that you have to arraign in the court where that has jurisdiction over the offense, which would be the court where the offense occurred generally. There are rules for unavailability of judges when you can do arraignments not in the court that has jurisdiction. I'm not off the top of my head familiar enough with those to tell you whether they would operate on a regular basis or become, you know, as a, as kind of an easy way for the police to do this.
Okay, and as I know that there was some, a sharing arrangement with our municipality and the town of Amerenik when people are unavailable. As it goes now, but you know, okay.
Right.
And the cost of running a court, from my understanding, is based upon a townwide assessment. I remember that from my time over in the town of Amerenik. So in essence, all of us who live in Rye or in the town are already paying taxes to support the court. Will those taxes go up? Yeah, probably, it'll be spread over, you know, for those of us who live in the town of Amerenik or the large amount in the unincorporated area. But I think we, you know, those, those were my questions and concerns. I think we're a long way from doing this right now, but I would like to hear what other members of the board have to say. If you want to talk about it.
Tom, I, I, I would like to see more financial analysis on this. I would like to hear from the police officers about what this would entail in terms of driving people to the town courts instead of just walking next door. But I know that when we've looked at talking about redoing that village municipal building and having an underground Sally Port and all that, it was going to add, it was going to be really expensive to deal with prisoners in the village court. So I would be very interested in seeing how this works.
Good. Anybody else?
We have things like, if you got, if you got a traffic ticket in Rhineak, you'd go to Portchester to court because the right court is actually in Portchester. And the right town court's in the Portchester building, is in the village of Portchester. And if you got a ticket on the other side of the river, you would go to the town of Amerenik. What if you had building code violations? That wouldn't be done, if you had a building code violation, it would be done by another municipality, not the village, correct?
It would be done in town court.
Whichever town you were in.
That's right.
I know Massachusetts has district courts.
So does, so does Nassau County.
Oh, really? The local villages in Nassau County don't have courts?
There, there are a few village courts that remain, but the bulk of the local courts are district courts.
Interesting. Okay. Victor, you have any questions?
I, I think we should take the next, the next step, if, if there's enough to hear the police, for example, the department, for example, we could have it openly and see what, what they say before. Because I think, I think the, it's not just a financial decision. But of course, in this situation where we are, it, it, it will, but, but I think if we're just turning it into a financial situation, you know, there are a lot of elements here. I haven't, haven't, I didn't know where this was coming from. I don't know, was this, is this the mayor's initiative or was it staff who, who, who started this? So we know. Your initiative or your, who put this on the agenda?
Kelly, did you?
I didn't put this on the agenda, but I have been interested in this.
Yeah, we, we put, Jerry and I put this on the agenda, knowing that there may be some interest and obviously seeing, you know, the world we're in now as opposed to last year or two years ago. You know, we're going to look to try and, you know, realize as much savings and value as we can for the residents and the taxpayers.
Thank you. That, that explains, you know, in a way, why, why it's coming to us and why we'll, we'll look at. So taking it step by step, I think it's, it's the right thing so that we don't, you know, start just a huge study and then, then back, you know, go back, I think.
That's a good idea.
Police department is central.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send an email tomorrow, copy the word to the police chief asking for their input.
Building Department, how about fire? We have fire, oh, fire. Fire code violations would be most of it?
Yeah, fire code violations are part and parcel of the building code.
Right, okay.
You know, the, the Village of Ardsley was doing a study on this several years ago. I was contacted, that's potentially being an expert for that study. I don't know if they ever concluded it or not, but maybe Dan, you want to reach out to the village manager? Yeah, yeah, Meredith Robson, I'll speak to her.
And you also might want to reach out to Portchester to have some information.
You can try and reach out to Fritz.
Yeah.
Hey, does the Village of Larchmont already go to the town of Amerenik?
No, they have their own judges.
They have their own.
Ernie and Beaver, I think, the little ass too.
Right.
They have a pretty light load compared to, our judges are busy. Okay, so, so we're right, so follow up, follow up with building department. And the police department to begin with. And, or if you could get us more detailed dollars and cents of this. Ogie?
Yes, sir, I'll get you the analysis Portchester did.
Okay, then Ogie will follow up with Portchester. And call Fritz.
I'll call Tony Sullivan.
Let's write Tony's back there. All right. So we have homework to do. The next item on the agenda is eliminating residency requirement for the court clerk. Right now, the assistant court clerk does not have to be a resident of the Village of Amerenik. That was a change that was made. The board, not the board, the staff is asking that the court clerk, his, him or herself does not have to be a resident of the Village of Amerenik. Currently, the, the court clerk is, I just want to point out. Dan, you want to talk to us? You wrote the memo?
Yeah, basically every appointed position in the village right now, which includes the clerk treasurer, the manager, the assistant court clerk. There are various laws that have been adopted by the village board waiving residency requirements for them. Sorry, I almost had a overfired moment there. We're asking that that be extended to the court clerk position as well.
I, I don't personally see any reason why not, but I'm hoping that in treaty.
Can you clarify two things? Is it the court clerk's position or the assistant court clerk?
No, the assistant.
Let's start with the court clerk first, the, the, the top.
So.
What's the requirement for the clerk, for the top clerk? Not the assistant.
So this, the requirement right now is that the court clerk be a resident of the village. That's in county civil service law, I believe it's in state law too. The assistant court clerk, the village board enacted a local law, I think it was in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, waiving the residency requirement for that title. So we're not limited, if we need to canvas a list for assistant court clerk, we wouldn't be limited to village residents only. We would have a large pool of candidates, so much we could.
What points the village clerk, the assistant court clerk? How, how? Is that, is that the village manager?
Village manager, yes.
Right?
Yeah, I think.
The court clerk does need a.
Court clerk is appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the judges.
But the assistant court clerk is just filling a position with, with civil service, etc.?
That's correct.
Okay.
Does the board have feelings about them? I mean, I, as long as it makes sense, especially in this day and age. Anybody have any?
Is, I guess, there's no like local list the way they have for the police, so there's just one civil service list?
For court clerk, I believe it's an exempt position, so there is no civil service test for it.
Any position that the mayor can appoint is exempt.
What do you mean, exempt?
Exempt from civil service.
So this is not a civil service job? Okay, but this is actually, but the judges have to agree with this appointment too. They have to agree to the clerk's appointments, right?
Yes.
They have to give their advice and consent.
So have the, have the judges been asked about this?
This is about where people live.
I'm just, we asked, I mean, we asked the judge's input, that's all.
I'm fine with asking judges input.
Yeah, we can ask them. And this is also.
I'm sorry, I, I think I know what they're going to say, but you should ask him about the first one, yeah, first also.
Right, I was thinking that.
There's no hiding about it, let's, we're talking about it, let's just ask them.
Yeah.
I'll say it again, Victor, I understand.
Ask him about the, the, the first item we discussed.
Yeah.
I probably think what he's going to say, what they're going to say, but let's have a, I think, to be asking them openly.
Yeah, and just one other, you know, food for thought, Nora, is, you know, this is also, if it's a change in local law, it's not just a change today. Unless it's changed again in the future, this is something that remains in effect and, you know, in perpetuity. Until this time is.
The law's changed.
Law's changed, so.
Right, the law, it's not a policy.
Yeah.
All right, so judges. About consolidation. I bet that's going to be a hard. No. As my children say, it's a hard no. Consolidation and about residency. Okay. Anybody else, anything else to say in this issue? No. Okay, six fifteen, we're going to go to the flood committee, at six thirty, we're going to go to the Board of Ethics Review Law. Building Department land use software update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We provided a memo and a copy of the proposal. We, you know, had a search this year, we looked at multiple software products.
Dan, can you just speak up a little, please?
Okay, yeah, I will, give me one moment, sorry about that. So we've spent the, you know, better part of the year looking at various land use software products. And among them, GovPilot Admins and General Code, which is the reseller of Municity five. We are recommending to move forward with Municity five for the board's education in the public. We are, we currently use an earlier version of Municity, which is called Municity three. But Municity five is, it's a, it's a really entirely different product. It's built on different databases. It's a much more robust product, allows for storage in the cloud of our documents. Web access, which is a major improvement over what we currently have. You know, there are several items, things that we have identified as advantages of Municity five. The biggest item is the database conversion. You know, because it's a Municity, going from Municity product to Municity product, they will take care of the implementation of the upgrade to us, for us. Once we move to Municity five, it will allow us and will work with the Laserfish Cloud much better, which will make the document portal easier to use and more well-supported. You know, as I said, we've been using Municity three for approximately ten years. We've been, you know, quite satisfied with the level of support that we've gotten, both technical and, you know, from a customer service perspective. There's a Municity five mobile app, you know, there's a mobile app right now on the current version of Municity, but it does have some issues in that one works on one platform. And then again, the public portal will allow constituents' residents to view data and permits online. In terms of the cost, the first year cost for implementation is sixty-one thousand thirty dollars with an annual recurring cost of thirty-one thousand two fifty. And if anyone wants to take a look at some of the features of the system, we've included a copy of the proposal attached to the agenda. I am not the most technical people, so I, if you ask me a technical question, I will defer to more technical people. So with that, are there any questions?
I have a few.
Sure.
Which, which municipalities around here are municipal, municipal, Municity five?
I don't have the answer, but I know it's many. A lot of the municipalities in Westchester County hopped on to Municity in the two thousand eight through two thousand eleven, twelve timeframe. And it was, at the time, it was a superior building department software and land use software product. I won't get into what software we had before that, but it was kind of like the Wild West and it wasn't as functional. Municity was a tremendous benefit for the communities down here. The original vendor is called SCA and I believe was the Software Consultants Associates. They made their bread and butter in assessment software and believe they're located in Duchess County or they're, they're in the Hudson Valley. Duchess County, or they're in the Hudson Valley. So I can get you a list of names of existing customers tomorrow, but suffice to say that I know many customers locally in Westchester County use the product.
Have we talked to them and found out what their, what their experience is in terms of what the problems are and what it doesn't do? Wouldn't prefer it did do, that it doesn't. I mean, we had this discussion when we went to Exella. And we, there was an issue between what Exella did that was better than what Municity five was going to do. That if we went with Municity five, there were many things, including, if I recall, what the public could access.
Yeah, but I think it's a, it's a much more robust system now than it was, you know, six months ago or, you know, two or three years ago. I recall that when we talked about this, I want to say, maybe it was in November or December. I had, you know, gone over, I may have actually discussed with the board some of the communities using Municity five. I know New Rochelle was in the process of moving to Municity five. I think they were having some issues, but I can't recall what they were, but I can certainly follow up on that as well.
Okay, I think, I think it's important to them and find out not only what they like, but what they don't like and what the problems were. Do we know what the city of Ry is used? I know I talked to you about that.
Yeah, I asked, we left a message with City of Riley, they had not returned our phone call yet. I think Cliff reached out to them, I want to say, maybe it was Wednesday or Thursday last week. It was, it was right after I spoke with you, I asked Cliff to reach out to the IT folks.
Okay, I think we should be, I knew that, I know that on their public portal is probably far superior than many other communities that I know. From the time an application comes in, whether, you know, it's official or pre-app, it can be listed and every, every memo, every inspection, every letter pro con or whatever can be put up there and the public can actually see it, and that would eliminate a lot of FOIL requests. You know, that we continually get from. So I think that that's one of the, one of the major issues I think we should be looking at. Type of thing, but I, like all software programs, there are, you know, there's a yin and a yang, and I'd like to know both of them.
Yeah, I mean, municipal software is, it's a fickle business.
All software is a fickle business.
Municipal software more than most. It's, after twenty years, I'm almost as confused as I was when I started.
How is this going to improve access to documents that we need on the portal? Because one of the reasons we left Municity was because Exella had a better portal.
So the, the key is with this, it's the, you'll have better Laserfish integration. That's, Laserfish is the, is the portal. You know, any, I know we've had some issues recently, which I think we may have discussed prior, or at least there's a memo included with the previous agenda. But, you know, moving to Municity five should solve those Laserfish translation issues. And I don't want to put Augie on the spot, but is that, is that a fair statement, Augie?
It's a fair statement, but also, if I may, that.
Yeah, absolutely.
What should you keep in mind is, we purchased Municity something like ten years ago. Since then, they've done about three upgrades. We've never taken part in any of the upgrades. Our database is basically a, go ahead, Victor.
I was gonna say, when I started joining, this conversation hurts a lot, gives me really like a stomach ache. Because it hurts and I know it's costing us a lot of money, litigation with the other firm. And, but my question, to be, not to interrupt, is that we were, when I joined the board, we were upgrading. We were, the problem were, the problem were micro fish, micro fish issue, interplay. So it seems that we have made some progress there, but actually has Dan was nailing it, that's the key, that all those pieces work. And, and because we were doing an upgrade and we, that upgrade didn't really, didn't really work, and actually, I remember hearing that their service was not very good. And I've met, I've seen these faces, I've talked to them also, when, when you go to the conferences, and I come and you talk to the competition. And that's why, after trying to upgrade and getting all the pieces to work, we ventured into Exella with some of the similar assurances that we're getting now. So I think my point is not pinpointing our, you know, what, what went wrong. Because I, we know that everything went wrong with that implementation. The point is, is here that even, even if we hear this statement, which is that we have our, you know, manager of information services, Cliff, saying that he's confident that we are able to have the planning, implementation, and support that the village requires in this project. I mean, with that assurance, I, I of course have trust staff, but I think we really just, just be mindful that some of the things that we were addressing a few years ago were precisely kind of the same issue. So we, we really need to cross those dots. So I mean, I mean, and just, just be so careful and have an implementation plan that needs to be reviewed. You know, at each, at each, at each time. But I, I think with this, with this assurance that we're having a system that's not working, what else, what else can we do? So let's, let's just be also be mindful that this is the third, the second try, and it's, we're still, we're still trying. So, so let's, let's, let's hope that all the due diligence is done. I think that's the key.
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to hear with the clerk treasurer, what were you, finish what you were saying.
You purchased the software ten years ago, like most software companies, they put out updates. Microsoft, Lotus, they all put out updates. We've never opted into any of the updates. Municity over the last ten years has done, has done about two to three updates, which we've never participated in any of them. A lot of these updates come with new features and new packages. Currently, we have upgraded Laserfish. With trustees Lucas's advice, we went to the web, to the web version of it, and it's great. But it doesn't integrate with a product that's over ten years old. We're having the problem integrating the two because we've never upgraded Municity at all through all the different versions. So when you buy Microsoft Office, you'll go from two thousand fifteen to Microsoft two sixty-five to three sixty-five. We've never done any of the upgrades, so that's why we're having communication errors. Our database right now in Municity is open source. It's not a licensed version of the database. Everything needs to be upgraded, and that's why we're having so many troubles with the connectivity.
Okay, thank you.
And also, didn't we have a problem where the last version of Municity that we purchased was supposed to have some functions that they never delivered on?
That's Excel.
So I mean, Municity, we just, as you just said, we haven't purchased in ten years.
Right, but I thought that part of the problem, I thought part of the problem was Municity wasn't providing what they said they were gonna provide to us, so we didn't stick with them.
The original company, SCA, wanted to create a clerk's package, which they never developed before they sold the company.
Okay.
Went with the clerk's package.
Any other questions?
Well, I just remember, you know, several months ago, when we were still meeting in person even, we had a presentation about this issue, and I think Cliff was talking about it too. And from that conversation, it looked like we were heading in the direction of Municity five, so it seems like we're just continuing slowly down that road. I'm sure the building department would like to have it done, you know, sooner rather than later. But maybe if we can poke around different municipal websites and see if we like their access, you know, Dan, Nat just says, you know, you poked around on Ry and liked that one, see, you know, see which ones we like, but. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. To talk to, this is a couple items on the agenda tonight that are on for a regular meeting, and they're layups. One is two-way bench donations, Yiza, Bosolino, and Joseph. Just typical bench donations in Harbor Island Park. Does somebody have any problems with them?
No.
Okay, and the last one is a donation of Kanzan Cherry Trees. I believe that's from the Larchmont Nursery. They're donating four trees, so I have a problem accepting that donation.
No.
Great, thank you. The only items that are on for.
There's one for the lumber, for the dock repair.
Where's that?
It was right after the gift from.
Establishing capital budgetment account for dock repair, Marina Carbon Marina, authorization to purchase material for dock repair.
Yeah.
You want to explain this?
Sure, so we have a project to start replacing sections of the docks at Harbor Island Marina. Our plan is to look at, try and replace twenty-one sections, each section being about six feet by twenty feet. The, you know, we got some estimates from contractors, and they came in approximately ninety-three thousand dollars. We looked at the potential for purchasing the material and doing the work in-house with village forces when, during the winter, where we have some availability. We got quotes for the various equipment and material, and looks like we can purchase all of it for about sixty-one thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars. The first item is the pressure-treated wood. We can actually purchase the pressure-treated wood through Sourcewell contract. If we can purchase off the contract, it obviates the need to go out to public bid, which would also save several weeks of time. You know, when acting harbor master LaRusso put together his first original quote for the wood, he thought it was gonna be about thirty-five thousand dollars, and as you can tell from the quote, it was pretty accurate. I think we were gonna get it for just slightly under thirty-five thousand dollars if we're able to move forward to have the, to purchase the wood through that Sourcewell contract, assuming the board sees, believes it appropriate to set up the capital budget account and authorize the purchase of the wood.
Yeah, is there any problem yet?
I have some comments, and, but in question, there's no question that the docks need to be replaced. They're well, well past their useful life, as are the piles, as are the gangways. But there are a couple things that are concerned. Is the, is the flotation encased or not?
I don't know the answer, I can certainly.
Okay. One of the problems that I'm concerned is you're replacing it with wood, with wood decking. And I will tell you that that has all sorts of potential problems, liability issues from my vantage point. And composite decking is, is almost maintenance-free, whereas wood decking is not, is just the opposite. And I'm concerned that we're doing wood decking. We also will need permits from the DEC. And unfortunately, it's gonna require the gangways to be replaced with ADA gangways under the ADA law, because if you touch it, you fix it, and then you have to do that, you don't have a choice. So, why, you know, and there is monies available for part of those docks, you know, that we started working on over a year ago. Somehow or other COVID and other things we're not following through on. So we could get a hundred thousand dollars for, you know, for the transient docking facility by the launching ramp. You can get money for the transient docks in the East Basin. But you need the permits, and you have to, we have to get them anyway. So, well, I'm all in favor of it, and I would love to do it, and I think, you know, that it's worth every penny that we have to put into it, we need to do it right.
So you're suggesting a product like Trex?
Say again?
A product like Trex.
Trex is a product, I'm not necessarily a big fan of Trex for reasons, historic reasons that we've had with, with static electricity. They say they've solved the problem, I'm not sure that some of the people that have used that, but there are, there are other products. There are lots of products that are around, and I'm happy to share the knowledge we have, if that's what you wish.
Dan, does this have to be on tonight?
Well, I mean, the, if we're gonna start replacing with pressure-treated wood, I mean, you know, we want to get this as quickly as we can, so we can start working as quickly as we can. You know, I think we want to start probably, you know, early to mid-December. There's a several week, week time just to get the wood delivered. So that's why we're, I ask that this be considered both the work session and the regular session.
Okay, so what's the rule of what, move this to regular? I'm, I'm fine for putting on the regular, anybody else?
Well.
Well, we couldn't go ahead with, with, with timber decking, because that's what you're doing.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I would strongly recommend it against it, and I can tell you that, you know, we do numerous facilities and we will not use wood decking. There, there are good, there's good composite decking that you don't have to, you know, that has lasted numerous years without any issues whatsoever.
What's the price differential between a composite and a wood?
I can't tell you, because I don't know what the price is that the village would, you know, get for either.
I just maybe in general, is composite generally, or generally more or less expensive than wood?
If you buy it right, they're, they're very close. Sometimes the composite is cheaper, sometimes the composite is more expensive. I know we're doing a new facility now, and we've gotten quotes both ways, and the composite has come out better.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? We approved this tonight, asking the harbor master if he can use composite to use composite, but let's get moving on this, or we're not gonna get anything done?
I agree with that. I have one question for Dan. Before we go down this composite question, are there any environmental leakage or seepage issues with composite material being in the water?
No, actually, it's better because your, your wood is treated wood and leeches.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I think that's fine, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dan, I saw it off, you understand that?
Yes, I do. Mr. Mayor, with your difference.
Actually, one thing Sally just told me.
We have, we have flood waiting for us, though.
I know, but I want to make sure we get everything that's on. Engineering Services, I and I investigative areas, seven, nine, and ten.
Yep, so that's the next phase to be investigated. We spoke to the board last week about, last meeting about the quotes we got. We've already incurred some costs for mapping work that we needed to do for this area. I think we've got six or seven thousand dollars in bills from Kelly sessions. So we're asking if the board will be fit to authorize the creation of the capital budget and appropriation, so we can at least pay some bills and put ourselves in a position for going forward. I mean, we know that, I think, the investigative work, the quote we got from Arcadis was one hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we just want to be able to, in a position to get the work started and pay some bills which are already incurred.
Okay.
One, one question, why is the colored sessions invoice here for us? Was that a mistake?
No, I just wanted to show you his backup to show that we, we had to get some work done in advance. So this, these were the invoices for the work that we needed colored sessions to perform for us, for meter area six, seven, and nine.
This is the proposal for I and I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think that was a separate idea. Oh, well, we just wanted to show you both proposals that we got to, you know, let, let both you and the community know that we did seek multiple proposals for the work and based on.
That's the one we approved two weeks ago, right?
And I think we, we spoke to you two weeks ago, and you said, can you get Arcadis down? And we did, and this is just demonstrating again that we got the proposal from Arcadis. And we did. And this is just demonstrating again that we got the proposal from Arcadis.
It's even lower. Okay.
So I got confused.
Okay. We, can we put that on for a regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go to the old flood committee and we have Peggy Jackson who's muted. You're muted, Peggy.
Yep, I'm here. Hi all.
Hello Peggy, how are you?
Thank you for coming. Weeks, but all is well. Thank you. This is quick, short and sweet. We just had three recommendations from the committee that we wanted to suggest to, for the board to consider. First thing would be all for future new construction in a flood zone should be built in apologies, I should say, in a flood zone that is commercial, not, not complete flood zones, should be built to a minimum of two feet above the base flood elevation. There was a lot of pushback that we heard on the community, on the committee, on the Brixmore project, which was not built two feet over the BFE. And we think for all future projects that should just be written into, into village law. The Brixmore people, unfortunately, in that side unit, those stores are going to flood. If we ever have another big flood, which we all know we're going to have. And if it had been built up higher, it would be less risky for everyone. So we wanted to suggest that. Second point, all future construction and flood zone must be built with pervious paving surfaces as opposed to impervious. It, we think, we think that it's just better practice. Try and keep as much water going into the earth as we possibly can and having less runoff. And the third point was for all residential new construction where land must be cleared in order to develop a site. Assessment should be made by the tree committee so that mature trees with an established caliper, which hold, help hold water back during rainstorms would be taken down only in the footprint of the new structure. There's a new home that's gone up on North James. They took, excuse me, on Ellis. And they took nine trees down around the periphery of the perimeter of the property. In a flood zone, that just doesn't make good sense to us. So these are three quick, short, I mean, obviously they'd have to be put into proper legalese, but suggestions the committee would like to see us work on.
Okay. I just, thank you. About the, the tree committee. I just want to point out, when I was with the town of America, we passed a site plan law for all teardowns and all new construction. So that if you're building a new house, you would have to go to planning for site plan. And in that discussion, the discussion of trees and keeping the trees would happen. And the impetus behind a lot of what we did there was people clear cutting properties. And the good thing about having a planning board do it is that they have then real authority to, you know, persuade applicants to do what they want to do. The tree committee, well, you know, they're, they're, they're great people and stuff. They don't have that kind of permitting authority.
Right.
That the planning board would have. So this, I mean, I agree with the idea. That my initial reaction is this might be something we want to work on as a community doing site plans for teardowns or any, right now we do, I think it's over half an acre. But, you know, there's so many houses in this community that are well below half an acre. There's very few houses that even qualify to have an acre.
And anything in the flood zone, I think, should have that same review.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm trying to find a way to make that review happen and give it to you.
There, in the proposed tree law, there is a provision for site plan review. You know, for, for, for basically a tree preservation plan for any time the planning board is doing a site plan review. And that law is being retweaked, but this might be a simpler way of accomplishing that specific goal.
Right, right. But yeah, it has to have site plan review, right? I mean, if I'm building, if I'm building a house on an off five, I don't have site plan review or an off.
Right. Yeah. So this house is on a point one six acre. I'm not sure exactly what. There's no review at all. It went to the ARB and that was it.
Okay. Any other ideas?
Those are our three for today.
Just as a question, how, the, the two feet above flood, is that from some statutory thing or is?
That's, so when I raised my house, it had to be raised two feet over the base flood elevation. That's a standard FEMA requirement. There's a way to get around it in commercial building, which is if you put in floodgates, you don't need to do that. However, that's really not addressing the real issue because floodgates aren't going to prevent structures from flooding, especially with the kind of flooding we have.
And, and what they can do is actually protect the structure that they are building, their own structure, but force floodwater onto neighbors.
In addition, that happens as well. Absolutely. So if we want to get serious about taking care of our flood areas, we think this is just good. And we're, we're going to come up at some point of, of the whole industrial zone being theoretically developed. We should have laws on the books before we go into that process.
Okay.
Thank you Peggy. Thank you all so well. Thanks Peggy. Take care. You too.
Is a maybe I'm confused. Are the folks from the ethics review committee come? Does anybody know?
Well, I thought that, I mean, we got emails today saying that they were. So yeah. Just let me, let me just look. Ellen's here.
I was, I mistakenly thought Ellen, Ellen seems to be the only gang member. Let's get Ellen.
She'll get all the attention.
Hi Ellen.
Hello. How are you?
Good, my friend. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you. I don't know where everybody else is.
Seems you're the only.
Do they have? They got the invitation, right?
We all did. And we had a quick meeting last week and everybody knew about tonight.
We don't know about.
Do we want to send a reminder? Somebody's dialing in.
Hey, Kopey is on.
Hey, Michael.
Hello, Mayor.
I'm going to send a reminder. Okay. Cause I've got their email up.
Mike, do you know Ellen?
We spoke last week.
Yes.
I predict you. You got no picture, Kope?
No, Mayor, I dialed in right now. I'm just not in a position to get on the computer. So I just did better this way.
Okay.
I just sent it.
Nora sent the reminder?
I did.
I'll give him a minute.
So did Sally. Nora, you asked about the flood committee in your reminder.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oops.
The subject line is good.
Okay. Oops. I will say, oops.
Dan Carson's joining.
Good. Okay. Sounds like an old department store with the chimes.
All right. Hi Dan.
Hi there. Greetings all.
Hi Dan.
Hello. So nice to see you.
Nora.
Yeah, it's nice to see you too. It's nice to see anybody, right? We should.
Not that I'm not happy to see everybody else, but Nora and I go back.
We do. We were on a board together a long, long, long time ago.
Which board?
The MAC board.
The Regatta.
The Regatta. Oh. It was a long time ago. It was before Molly was born.
No.
And then again, after she was born. I had two, I had two stents on that board.
We wait for anybody else? Or we think that this is going to be three as far as to? Mr. Kerr coming?
Could be.
How have you been, Dan?
Very good. Thank you. Everybody holding up?
You still down on?
Sorry.
Still down on Sea Haven?
Oh, of course. Of course you're here for, we're, no plans to go anywhere.
Good, good.
Good. We need, we need good residents like you.
We, oh, we just, I, I grew up in an apartment house in the Bronx. I never lived in a house until I came to Mamaroneck and I could never live. Like, I just couldn't live in a, in a, in a, in a, in a city like, again, I mean, I love going there, but
Yeah.
this is the most wonderful place.
I feel the same way. I mean, I, like you, I grew up in the city and I'm so glad I live close, but I don't think I have the strength to live there anymore.
No, we, our, our boys grew up here. They went through the public schools. They loved it. We loved it there for them there. Although they're now in Washington and Philadelphia.
Which, which one of your kids went to school with Emma?
I'm sorry.
One of your kids went to school with my Emma.
Uh, how old is she?
Twenty-seven, about to be twenty-eight.
That would be Sam.
Sam. Okay. Okay. It's all coming back to me now.
Yeah, Sam lives in Washington DC and Evan lives in Philadelphia.
Okay. I think, I think we have who we're going to have here. If somebody joins us, somebody joins us. All right. I think you need to hear kind of what the parameters or what, what the direction is that the board wants to go. Am I wrong?
Correct. We'd love to get an in-person view of what caused all this and what you are looking for from the ad hoc committee. So we can serve the village and serve and meet expectations. We don't want to spend a lot of time doing stuff that nobody's interested in. We want to address the issues which are on people's minds and which require remediation for the, for the, for the committee. So that's the reason for this, a way of a hands-on view.
Okay. Well, I, I can speak for myself. I was on the board that passed the law that is now currently in the books. And while I have no qualms about changing how it works, I, I think it's important that we maintain the spirit and the intent of law. And at that time, the spirit and the intent of the law was that this community would have a law, an ethics law that exceeded and went above and beyond what other communities had. And that we, you know, we were looking to kind of, to be Caesar's wife, right? Beyond reproach. And if there are other ways of achieving that goal, that's fine, but I think that should be the goal. I, I think the goal shouldn't be, we should have an ethics law like everybody else. So there was a reason that the law was enacted and the reason was that a lot of people, myself included, at the time felt that it was something that the village needed to restore confidence in how a village government worked and to make people in general have more faith in government. I think that we're going through a crisis of faith in government, both from Washington all the way down. I think people don't trust the institutions of government. And I think that having a law that holds us to high standards, to me, is very important. And, you know, if, if there's another way of skinning that cat, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, entertain that. But that for me is the bottom line.
Where, where does the law not meet those expectations now?
Well, I, I think the law does meet those expectations. I, I think that the issue that a lot of people have with it is how it is in practicality used and how it, it might be too restrictive in some ways. I mean, I, I might not be the best person to answer that because I wasn't the impetus behind, you know, forming committee. But that, that being said, I, I think if there are ways that make it more understandable, ways that make it clearer while keeping the high ethical standards, that might be a good reform. But I'll leave that to the other members of the board trustees to see, you know, how they view this. But bottom line, that's kind of where I am. You know, that, you know, we, we don't want to lessen our standards. Anybody else on the board?
Um, you know what? This is Kelly. I'll jump in and say, I think while the existing ethics law is strict and something that we aspire to, I'm not sure we've hit those goals in, when the ethics law has been applied. So I would be interested in knowing how you think the ethics rule has worked over these many years that we've had it. You know, has there been enough guidance to land use board members, to committee board members, to elected officials? Has there been enough guidance? We all understand what's expected of us. Is, you know, has our Board of Ethics been a, an effective sounding board for advisory opinions? You know, one thing with having a code of ethics that is stricter than the state standard is that, you know, there aren't as many advisory opinions you can turn to. So how could people in the village, you know, be more informed and aware of what the standards are and how they apply? I mean, you know, I think there's, there's something in our code and I apologize for not looking this up, but you know, that, you know, many municipalities don't allow a gift beyond, you know, above $50 or something like that. And ours says any, any gift. So, you know, is a cup of coffee, you know, if you're talking to someone, is that, is that a problem? And if it is, should, should there be some training and understanding that that's what the standards are? I just think, you know, while there are good intentions behind our law, it's not, it, there hasn't been enough training or awareness of how it applies every day to, to the broad group of people who serve the village. That's my take on this.
Kelly, it's Ellen. I have a question for you. You just mentioned. So early on with COVID, as I believe you're all aware, we started a GoFundMe page to send me to the police department and EMS. Would you consider that not allowable? From a gift perspective?
Um, your, your sound went off a little bit. You, so you established a GoFundMe for the police department and EMS?
We did a GoFundMe page to raise money to provide meals for the police and EMS during the height of COVID.
Yeah. Um, I, I, I think that's fine. Um, I don't know that if you raised money for the Board of Trustees to give us a free meal, that we could do that.
I, I think in reading, I wonder the, the code of ethics, I think there is an allowance for de minimis gifts in attending events. And so I think that, that is covered. But Kelly, your, your comment about not being sure whether the goals were met, the goal, the goals were met when the law has been applied raises an issue to me of how the board has functioned. And whether the board has been used enough or questions of ethics. But I, I think there is, I think the law does take cognizance of a, the cup of coffee kind of virtuity and, and addressed more. I, I think it's, it's not bad when it comes to, to defining. to defining where the, where the line is drawn. But having said that, we, as a committee, as the Ad Ho Committee has already met, and we have had some discussion about what we consider to be some ambiguities and some inconsistencies, which we do expect to address during the course of our work.
That, that's great. That's very good. Thank you.
Dan Carson, it might be useful to have a conversation with the Ethics Board and ask them, you know, their feedback of what they think works and what they think doesn't work.
Yeah, indeed.
I can give you that email address tomorrow.
Yeah, that, that's definitely on the list. We would like to speak to as many stakeholders as possible and make this inclusive so that we people feel as if they've been consulted on this, particularly people of an interest in the issues and the community at large.
Correct.
I think this is all good. I think you seem to be on the right path. I would hope that there's emphasis on, you know, information, education, you know, proactive approaches. I think that is very important.
Is there any particular, either, either taking into account recent controversy or not? Is there any glaring omission, any glaring problem with the the law, the code, or the, the way in which the, the board has operated that cries out for some attention from the Ad Ho Committee that anyone can, can care to address?
Well, I, I, and I think that the, when the, when the committee, when the, when the ethics law was first passed, the committee did their annual, they did the first annual report, and then there were two other annual reports that were referenced in minutes, but not, not available. And so I think that in the beginning, they were really trying to recommend changes because the code was new. But I think that we, that the, the tradition of an annual report should be reinstituted, is required, so it should be done. And I also think that the advisory opinions are supposed to be indexed and available, but they're not usually published on the website. So I think, you know, a list of advisory opinions, not necessarily the names of the people, but the, you know, the, the kind of category of questions would be helpful because, as Kelly said, because our code is slightly stronger than the state code, those advisory opinions aren't always on point. So I think to the extent the training of the Ethics Board, training by the Ethics Board of other local boards and sort of a history or of what the precedents have been would be helpful for people who are on, on all kinds of boards to know what the do's and don'ts are, like just a, you know, practical, for example, list.
I, I think there's also concerns that are regarding objectivity versus subjectivity.
Can you explain that?
There, there's some language that may be more subjective than objective.
Language in the code?
Language in the code, maybe in actions. I think those are things that need to, you know, might want to take a look at.
Okay, that's kind of, kind of general. If you could now or at a later time, point us to some specific section of the code which you believe reflects that, it would be very helpful to us.
Okay, Victor?
Let me just thank you all for doing this and to get to meet some of you. And I think really this is, this becomes more and more important. I, I just, I don't want to repeat some of the things that I've said. I think some ambiguities are, are as simple as, as looking at the definitions comparing to other codes. Some of them have been circulated. So, so I'm sure they, that you, you can, you can address those and also just an independent look at how this should function today. And nothing as to how good it was or intended in the past. I think the, the, it has to be viewed with, with today's eyes, both on the standards, definitions, things that might have changed, and also very much on the process. I think probably that's where there's a lot of, 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 also room to, to see how, how, how would this, how would it work, whether it is just on a advisory request or when, when, when it's actually down the road of an actual investigation and the bringing of the charges and, you know, it, it, it is hard to hear about it, but, but I, I, I see, we, I think we, that piece of the code was probably not, not no work, worked probably, I'm not saying properly, but because it was, it was, it was just being, being built. And I think, but now, but by now, we could either, we could look at that and maybe have some more expedited, concrete, look, look, look at how it should be implemented, both on, on just trying to solve things that don't really, to clarify issues so that you don't get down the road of, of, of an actual hearing, litigation, as much as you can to try to find those, those issues that may, may be, may be solved. And, and of course, that's happening all across the legal profession and others. It's just a, you know, problem trying to, to get a, to the problems before they, they, they become a larger, so you can use different, different, different venues. So, so that's one. And the big, big one that has been already said is, is, it's, it's really how, how it could be tailored to our own, our own village and, and, and the, the educational part with, with our own cases, with, with our, us of being, being together and, and working, working, so, working a plan so that it really gets, you know, we can get examples that are, that are useful and that, and that we get educated over and over time. I, I, I do get some of this training at least twice, two or three times a year and, and it's, it's just, and we, all, all lawyers need to. And, you know, you need at least four credits of ethics and those you don't get even if you teach. So, so you do have to, and this is, it's always, it's always the hard, the, the, it's so important and so many issues come up, any, any hypothetical, any question. So, and it changes all the time. So I, I think how, how it can be rolled out, explained, education, education is, is going to be so, so good for, for all of us. So, so that piece, I think, is then the third component that I think we will, we will, we would like to hear your input and as you hear others get, get, get the best options available for us.
Victor, thank you. Do you mean, when you said, talk about education, are you referring to communicating the existence of the, the board of the, the Ethics Board and its policies to the community in general? Letting them know that they exist?
Yes, and, 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 and also focus, focus on training. I, I think it goes, it's both, it goes to, to both. And I could tell you another one. I think there's, there's this, there is requirement that you have to, if you, if you recuse yourself, you have to do it in writing before the Board, Board of Trustees. I, I, I think I haven't, I have seen that very, a couple, only a couple of times. But, but it's so, so some things that may maybe, maybe, and of course, if you don't do it, you, you violated the code. Now, is it, let's kind of find a way that it is clearly communicated to, to the members of the public, to the actual members of the boards, but also to be, to come out to real practical solutions so that you identify issues, you saw, you, you bring them up to the board more, more proactive than, 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 than the stick. I think that's probably, probably where, where, where the combination of a revised code with outreach could, could help us.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just, Dan, the Ethics Board has recommended different changes to the Village Board over the years. And it might be helpful to see what they recommended and to have a conversation with them about why they recommended it. Because some of it predates most of us being on the board. Some of it was when some of us were on board and some of it was when a portion of us were here.
Kind of changes did they, did they recommend? Is there a record of those?
Yes, they will have them. Doing land use boards and recusals and possibly alternates to fill in spaces for recusals. But I know before that, they had offered other changes, but I honestly don't remember them often. I think they predate me. As we say here, they were BM before Murphy.
So I recall that some of them are mentioned in minutes, but there is just a general reference to changes recommended. And then they're not necessarily on backup to the Board of Trustees, so we might have to do a little bit of digging, but I bet we could figure it out.
We can ask them.
Yeah, I mean, the current chair has been there for six years, so he probably has a pretty good institutional memory of what has been recommended in the past six years.
Correct.
Actually, not many. In the last, I've been three and a half years, only they've come once with, with the ones that the mayor just mentioned.
Okay. Let's see what we can get here. Do you have any questions for us, any members of the Ethics Review Committee?
Any, go ahead. Any members of the Ad Ho Committee, please, please go on, get on.
Not now.
No, I don't either.
Yeah, I think we cover it. Have a discussion, then we come back as a group after our feelings and thoughts have been discussed with the other members and, you know, potentially challenged and then provided back through you to the board.
Anyone else on the board or on either board or staff? Mrs. Spolzino, you have anything to throw in here?
No, Mayor, I don't. I think you've covered it, laid the groundwork.
Okay. Mr. Carson, Mr. Spolzino is currently the Village Attorney. If you have any questions that he needs to address.
That's great. Thank you for that. Okay, well, we'll get underway and we will, thank you for this meeting. Very helpful. We'll most certainly make arrangements to meet with the current Board of Ethics. And as I mentioned, I am eager to get input from stakeholders like Chamber of Commerce, from various departments, certainly reaching out even to various employee groups, just thinking out loud, police, fire, sanitation. So we're going to ask the, ask Sally and others to help us communicate with them so that people feel that they've been consulted and they've had input.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for doing this and thank you for taking the time out of your evening.
Good, great.
I'm glad it finally worked out to me.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Thanks.
Thanks, bye.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, establishing a fee for review of stormwater pollution prevention plans. Mr. Sonoff, can you speak to this?
Yes, we were looking to maybe simplify the process for collecting some revenue when we do review of stormwater plans. I believe there is.
Dan, can you speak up?
Sure. We're looking to, you know, establish, make sure there are a funding source for review of stormwater pollution prevention plans as part of the building permit process. I think we wanted to maybe have a, a fee as opposed to an escrow because if you, you know, with escrow, you have to track it, you know, refund it. Maybe establish a flat fee might be a better alternative in the, in the long term as opposed to an escrow process. So this is something we wanted to review with the board, see if you want us to move down that road.
Okay.
So you're recommending a flat fee as opposed to?
An escrow.
An escrow?
Yeah. I think when you're talking about, you know, you typically, it's, it's not going to be a very expensive process for, to establish an escrow process where you have to, you know, get, take the check in, deposit it, track the expenses, you know, then ultimately refund it when everything's issued as opposed to a one-time fee, which, you know, simplifies the process for both the residents and the staff.
I ask you, Dan, you, you provide some good backup of what other municipalities do?
Yep.
Portchester, for example, depending on the units, White Plains per assessed value. What does the, what does the staff think is kind of the right?
I mean,
what could work here for us properly?
I mean, you could do any of them. I, I, I think that a flat fee just makes it simpler for everyone. You could have a tiered fee based on, on the scope of the work. You know, I think maybe tying something to assess value may not always be the most fair because, you know, the level of work may not necessarily be indicative of the value of the property. You could have a much more, you know, cost-effective solution on a larger lot as, and a much more expensive solution on a smaller lot. And typically, smaller lots, if you look at the demographics of the village, may not, are usually, you know, it may be a little aggressive in its application.
I guess a lot has to do with the, you know, with the site and the proposed project in terms of how complicated or simplistic it can be. My concern is a flat fee, you know, may not necessarily cover the expenses of, you know, a complicated approach. I, I know the Alter subdivision ran on for months, you know, in terms of stormwater issues. And there's SW3PP and, you know, how it was done or not. Then there is a, you know, something that's very simple, and then you would have something like Hampshire, which is not so simple.
Well, I think, sorry, go ahead.
So I, I think, you know, it would be nice to find out. I think Victor has a good point of what other communities are doing. But I, you know, I'm, I'm just sort of worried that if we do a flat fee as a flat fee, one fee for all, that some people will be penalized and some will the equivalent of a, you know, ride.
Yeah, I think there's a distinction between like a subdivision or, you know, the Hampshire project. And those are both before land use boards. And there is an escrow process at a land use board function. This is really more for the average building permit that comes in, that's going to require a SWIP because they are destroying more than 1,000 square feet of.
So is this being proposed because we don't charge or we don't have?
We don't, we don't have it for the.
Well, in, in, in the village code presently, we are allowed to do that for, for any, any application before the building department.
I understand that. I think we, the, the question is, do you want to stick with an escrow process or a flat fee, which simplifies the process, makes it easier to administer from, you know, the staff level?
But what I'm, what I'm hearing is that we don't charge, even though we can charge.
Well, we don't always because we've had.
Chicken?
We don't always because we've had village staff performing some of the work when we had an engineer. Yeah, I think we are starting to charge escrows to these projects. You know, there's no, we have to. You know, there's no, we have to develop a standard for how we would charge an escrow fee. As I said, if we had a flat fee, it would be again, easier for everyone to understand the process and for us to administer. So we'd have to, yeah, there, there's a time and cost for administering escrow.
Escrows.
There are, Dan, what is the provision you're looking at? I'm not familiar with the provision that allows the building department to charge fees that aren't in the fee schedule.
The, I don't have it in front of me. I know Sally, Sally sent an email out today with that, with the code. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, it's got to be in 294, if it's there.
I, I know I'd asked Dan to check with, you know, on this before and that, because I first on the board, there was a change to the law that was done in 2018 to allow staff to charge for their various activities.
That was in the escrow law. That was in the escrow law, and it only has to do with applications before land use boards.
Actually, if you read the definition, it goes beyond that.
Okay. I'll try to find it.
So Dan Sarnoff, let me ask you a quick question while Bob's looking that up. I see that the town of Mamaronek seems to charge just a flat $500, right? So that's what I'm seeing. And that the village of Rydebrook just says reasonable costs at prevailing rates. And then as backup, we also have some fire inspection fees. So I just want to be clear. Are you asking here that we also talk about fire inspection fees or is that just?
No, that we're asking for both.
For both.
Yeah, I think we want to start with the SWIP discussion.
Okay.
Just on the fire inspection fees, and I remember this from my last go around. What, I'm not saying we should do it, but I just want to tell you what the discussion was back then. The discussion was that they didn't charge fees for fire inspections because they were trying to encourage people to have fire inspections. And especially people with in-home fire you know, alarms. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I, I just want to put that out there that that was kind of what was going on at the time. They were trying to encourage people to, because they were A, having a lot of forceful, so that the fire department had to respond, and it was kind of wearing the fire department out. And B, they, they wanted people to encourage people to install firearms. So I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you what the discussion was.
Well, are fire inspections required?
I know for commercial properties, if you have a, a, a fire prevention system, it should be inspected.
Right.
Because I know I've been involved in many of those inspections over the years in the city.
And so the backup that we have talks about Portchester, and it starts at three units. Like three dwelling units.
Again, that, that's probably the definition of commercial. Typically, one and two family homes are not considered, they're considered residential.
Yeah, right.
Let me follow on that, I think what Kelly said, the, the, because Mamaronek, as you say, has one, one fee for everything. It's 100. And there's variations. Perhaps one of the very interesting ones actually is the city of Rye. And the, the, the numbers may be high, but it's very interesting because they break it out in four. Existence, existing residential property improvements, and that's 800. A new home is 1,500, non-residential is 750, provisions to stormwater permit, 450. That may be, and actually for, for non-residential, there's a dollar per 100 estimated construction cost. That seems to break it into four kind of basic types of review that will require the engineer to spend, I don't know how many hours. So that four, four category could, could be looked at, see if the building department sees that, that, that's a good way to tackle it here in Mamaronek, and also see if those numbers are, are if they're, actually, they are from 2008, March of 2008. But, you know, the situation here is different. So, but that, that sounds to me very interesting to take a look at that, those four categories.
Yeah, I guess, I guess kind of building off that is, I'd like to see how this type of fee would compare to what we've actually ended up charging people through the escrow system, you know?
Well, you know, the last couple of times I've, you know, asked for an escrow for a stormwater review associated with a building permit, I've asked the engineer to estimate how many hours he would need. And it's kind of what I'm basing it off of, you know, a couple hundred dollars per hour of application.
Okay.
I'm looking at chapter 176, which is the escrow fees entitled consultant fees for land use applications. And I don't see, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see how land use application, that definition applies to anything other than something going before a land use board.
I don't have it in front of me. I know I looked at it earlier today, and I respect your opinion and may be the case, but there is something in there that says applications before the building department.
It says an applicant to the zoning board of appeals from a determination of the building inspector.
No, no, the question is that, but I don't have it in front of me.
I, I have it in front of me, Dan. I, I pulled up the email, and the link that she provided was to chapter 176. That's it.
So there's another issue that you might want to consider in this mix, which is that once an application is granted or denied, the escrow closes. Even though there, there is often work that has to be done follow-up. For example, finalizing detailed plans, or a review of detailed plans of whatever installation was approved as part of the site plan or the subdivision. You may want to consider adding that post approval work to the escrow provisions.
Good point.
And Kelly, just one thing, I don't want to be dismissive of consultants and professionals. But sometimes the amount of time we spend on an application is based on the information received from the consultants, and some are not as thorough as others.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of whether, you know, if you pick a number, $500, or if you pick a sliding scale, how that would compare to our experience using the escrow system on particular properties, you know? How, so just how do we know we're picking the right numbers for a fee? That, that was my question.
Understood.
Where are, where do we want to go with this?
Well.
The question here, I think I found it, when it says land use application, there's an application by an applicant for subdivision, and it goes through many, and then at some point it says for the construction or reconstruction permit. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. I'm not sure what that means. Because we speak normally in terms of building permits. I'm not sure what that, what that, a perimeter construction or construction or reconstruction permit?
Well, a perimeter permit's usually HCZM, but it's preceded by a variance, which is zoning board. And then it goes, then it goes to construction or reconstruction permit, or then a consistency determination. So it seems like anything you can apply for.
That's an HCZM thing, I think, is that language, where that language comes from.
Well, we should definitely be charging for perimeter, I mean, for stormwater for SWIPs, and we definitely make sure we're able to administer them after the building permit is closed.
Yeah, if, if you want, what I can do is I can talk to Brian from Keller Sessions, and we just have a general conversation about the amount of time he spends on the average SWIP. Obviously, there's always going to be an exception to the rule. Maybe that, that's a good starting point to, you know, form a basis of.
Well, and I'm certainly, you know, if, if staff thinks this would make things easier for them, I'm all in favor of it. I think we should.
Yeah.
Do that.
Yeah, I think we should move forward.
Yeah.
All right, let's, let's go try to grab one more before we go.
Well, we have to do fire inspections. That was part two of this one.
Wait.
Yeah, that, that's the, the first page, or that's the, the email from Mr. Jimison, our fire inspector, about the various types of fire inspections.
So right now, we don't charge at all?
No.
And what are the other municipalities?
Well, based on the information, he was able to clean, you know, Portchester based on the number of units. You know, the public assembly inspections is based on the maximum occupancy. You know, non-residential properties is based on size. See, then there's, North Castle is kind of, again, the same, similar to Portchester in the number of units for, you know, multiple dwelling units. Briar Cliff is just a flat fee for $100. You know, I think, I wouldn't, you know, really compare Briar Cliff to the village of Mamaronek. I mean, it's, it's, I think Briar Cliff is much more residential in nature. You know, you have a, it's a, you know, Portchester from a demographic and build-out perspective is probably most similar.
Yeah.
To Mamaronek.
The, the prices in Portchester don't seem exorbitant.
But in, in what circumstances are the inspections required?
I can get the answer. I'll follow up on that.
I mean, is this something that every homeowner should be doing, or is it just?
No, again, it's, it's.
Definitely for most dwellings, and I think it also depends upon if you have an alarm that reports back to a central assembly.
Right.
Right, it's, it's not residences. So it's not a single-family residence.
Right, it's not a single-family residence. It's multiple, it's, okay.
And other places of public assembly and things like that.
Yep.
I mean, in those types of environments, you have much more stringent fire code requirements.
Yes. Schools, right?
Well, you know, if we start, we start at the Portchester level.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we want to start at a, a level that's not going to put anyone off or, yeah.
On money now. Did I find that?
I am. Yes.
Okay. All right. Really quickly, smoking policy? Everybody have a chance to look at it?
Hey, I looked at this, and I had a quick question for, I guess it's for Bob or Kristy. Section 290-1, where we say, "Smoking is prohibited in any indoor area of any building under the control of the village of Mamaronek, blah, 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 and within 25 feet of any entrance or exit." How would that apply to the regatta, where the village has office space there, but the door in 25 feet within the door involves area that's not village space?
Well, I think that's a good question. I would say it, it covers it, but we could, you know, we could make that language more specific.
Yeah, I would just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, you know, have something that already has this question in it. Is all, you know, that was my only comment.
I also looked at that, and that's a good point, Kelly. I also was concerned about the 25 feet, which is, if you're smoking relatively, if you're a nonsmoker, walking in and out of the building is very easy to get second-hand smoke, and I would suggest a larger figure of like 40 or 50 feet. All I know is that I've seen issues at some buildings where people are smoking within 25 feet of the, of the entrance doors of village offices, and people complaining about second-hand smoke because the wind is blowing that way.
Kristy, how do we get to 25 feet?
Um, I know I went back and I watched the video, and I can't remember if it was mentioned during the video, or I was looking at other laws online. I'd have to go back and look.
All right, don't, don't involve. I would be fine with 40 feet too.
Okay, I mean, I'm a little concerned that there's a limit at which you're not protecting the building, and you're starting to prohibit smoking in public, which is everywhere, which I'm not sure you can do within the village. I want to take a quick look at that. But if 40 feet is within, you know, if there's, if, if there's no authority that says you can't do that, we'll change it to 40 feet.
Okay. So can I be back on the work session two weeks?
Yes.
All right, it's 7:17. I think we could all use a break. I know I can. I'll see you all back here at 7:30. May I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All clear.
Hi.
Hey. All along.
Private dancer.
Dance on off his back.
Just thinking out loud, hoping to be a bunch of a meeting.
Oh, you won't let me start my video.
We're working on it. Is Meg Cowfer on? Hold on, let's see, call her. One minute, guys. Okay. All right. Second here. Everybody ready pretty much? I know Kelly's not having good, all right. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Mamaroneck Regular Order of Trustees Meeting, 7:30 on October 26th in the year of all Lloyd 2020. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, please. To meet through, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Pleasure to be here today.
Of the United States of America.
And to which all which stands.
My nation.
Nation.
God. Invisible.
Liberty.
And justice for all.
Who put the flag up? Who put the flag up on the screen?
Cliff.
Cliff, good job, Cliff. Uh, good evening. Tonight, we have a presentation, a special guest. We have Ms. Margaret Meg Cowfer. Ms. Cowfer is the head of the STEM Alliance. She is also very instrumental on the committee, Coalition for Community, who have been working hard to help the residents of this community overcome the challenges of COVID-19. The biggest one being a food deficit. Meg is kind of the the first point of contact for folks who are going to get a bag of food. She directs the line and she's done an excellent job and this community owes her a lot. And I appreciate her coming here tonight to talk about a special issue that STEM is working on. Ms. Cowfer, the floor is yours.
Hi, good evening, and thank you so much for your time. I wanted to talk to you today about my work with the STEM Alliance. First of all, Tom, thank you so much for the credit with the Coalition for Community. That really is a collection of nonprofits working to create solutions together using all of our different skills. And so it's a privilege to work with so many different people in the community to address the magnitude of needs that have erupted over the past months. What I wanted to talk to you about today is really work specifically that the STEM Alliance has been working on around the topic of digital equity. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and present some information about work that we've been doing right here in our community.
Can't hear you now, Meg.
You can still hear me or no?
Now I can hear you.
So, you know, at the height of the pandemic, the STEM Alliance, science, technology, engineering, and math, we were well equipped to understand what was going on for families in terms of this massive, very high-speed transition to digital platforms for learning and really for everything that was going on because COVID-19 really exposed a digital divide that predated the pandemic, but was actually really always leaving people with different levels of means to have different access to this digital world that many of us take for granted. So in looking through this work, I just want to first look at a couple of definitions and not assume that we're all talking about the same thing. You know, poverty is very often defined as being anywhere between $12,000 and $25,000 as an annual salary for a household. But what's really become apparent in the pandemic is this other category called ALICE, Asset Limited, Income Constrained But Employed. And so this is a population of people who are basically do not have enough money to function. They're kind of always one step shy of an emergency that could really change things for them. And this really gets into the digital divide, as I'll explain further. The digital divide is the gulf between those who have ready access to computers and internet and those who don't. And according to Pew, if you look kind of down at this area here, the broadband is people who are in that low-income category. And 50% of those compared to 94% of their high-income peers have a device in their home and only 56% have a home broadband subscription. According to the U.S. Census American Community Survey data, there's about just over 550 households in the Mamaroneck Union Free School District area that are and over 950 that have no internet subscription. You know, this is hard to track, but that gives us at least, you know, some level of sense of what the issues are in our community. This also runs along racial lines. 54% of Hispanic users nationally, 36% of black users versus 21% of white users worry about being able to pay a broadband or cellular bill. And so this gets at the issue of affordability, but also that that has a very high breakdown based on race. And then, as has been discussed, and I think has been pretty well popularized in the news, we also understand and know that parents from lower income backgrounds are describing that they have troubles when trying to schoolwork at home, whether that be Wi-Fi or the internet or a combination or a device or the combination thereof. What's interesting in a piece of research that I find very interesting comes from the Mackenzie and Co. analysts. And what they did is they took the research on summer slide. So the fact that we know that there's a learning loss over the summer for groups that come from a low-income background. And they applied that research and they projected outwards what the impact of the COVID-19 transition, rapid learning is going to do to different populations inside and what we see here is that all children are likely to experience some level of slide as a result of the transition to remote learning. But again, children from a Hispanic background, black children and low-income children have an increasing anticipated So when we look at the local story, we really have to understand that the digital divide has had a wide-reaching life impact. It's not just about school. School is certainly one of the primary impacts of not having access.
Having access.
But the other areas are healthcare access, telemedicine, banking and fiscal planning, employability, so tech skills. Job search, being able to do a job search and look for a job is something that happens almost exclusively online. And then civic participation, when we talk about completing the census, for example, or requesting an absentee ballot, almost all of that happens digitally these days. People may be familiar with the statistics for poverty in Westchester broadly, but also here in Mamaroneck, I think should really look at this ALICE statistic. So in Mamaroneck, there's, you know, some data or, you know, depending upon which census or data points you're using, this comes from the Westchester Children's Association. They suggest that there's a fourteen-point-seven percent of the Westchester households have no internet access. But if you look at alignment with and then you look at the Alice statistics, twenty-five percent of the town of Amerenek is in that Alice threshold. And in the one-zero-five-four-three zip code, thirty-five percent of that zip code is in this Alice category. And the reason that matters is because if you have limited choices about what you can spend your money on, then internet access and computer devices are probably very low on the list, especially when the pandemic hit. There just isn't any buffer room in the budget for things like that. So I think we often focus on the poverty statistics, but we really need to look at asset limited, income constrained, but employed. And that's a whole other population that is very present in our communities that we should be aware of and who are deeply impacted by the digital divide. So understanding the digital equity issue really comes down to three components: device ownership, internet access, and digital fluency skills. So the first is device ownership. A lot of folks say, well, isn't a smartphone good enough? Or a loner works like they're getting a loner from the school, so isn't that enough? The problem here is that device ownership is actually correlated to gaining those digital fluency skills. So if you own the device, you're more invested in, you know, working towards those skills. Without ownership, the motivation to stick to and learn those skills is significantly lower. The other issue with loner devices, such as the ones that are provided by schools, is that very often those devices are collected back during the summer months. In Amerenek, they've made an enormous effort to make sure that those devices can be available for kids during the summer months, but this is something that many communities have to be careful of because the summer months are very critical for learning. Then we have internet access, so just like, is the infrastructure here? So here you get into the discussion of the difference between cellular access versus broadband, which is not the same, because ultimately cellular access can be throttled by the companies in much more significant ways than broadband access. So it's important to understand that access is not just a rural issue or that, you know, just because a company says that we have access in our community, we need to be looking at broadband access, which is high-speed and less less frequently throttled or controlled in how much usage can be provided. So better mapping, more detailed mapping is really needed in that area. Then we look at part two of internet access, which is affordability. U.S. broadband and cellular costs are three to fourteen times higher than most of the forty-one EU countries. So the costs in our country are exorbitant compared to our peers internationally. And this is having a dramatic impact on low-income folks. The lack of affordability is really the primary driving factor in internet adoption. There's severe customer gouging in the low-end wireless market. There's overcharging by capping the gigabyte usage. And so they'll, you know, it's appealing to a family to buy into a low-cost program, but then if they go over the gigabyte usage, they get severely charged. And that is something that's really targeted at low-income customers. The U.S. unlimited wireless customers are being charged, some say, by a rate of fifty to seventy-five dollars overcharged a month. And those triple pay costs, again, are way in excess of our peers in EU countries. And then the third part of internet access is adopting internet use. So if you could afford it and if you have access, the question is, what motivates you to become an internet adopter? And Pew has done a survey where sixty-five percent of smartphone users said that they can accomplish all that they want to do online with their phone. But the problem with that question is, how do you know what you can't do if you've never done that thing before? How do you know what's enough if you've never actually gone through that portal of an actual laptop or computer-connected device to see how much more capacity and how many more things you can do? So really, this is a very, very important aspect of the internet usage is what motivates someone to go that extra step to become an internet adopter. And that really is the device ownership and being able to experiment with it and test and push your tech skills. So when you look at digital fluency, there's a lot of conversation, you know, at the county level in particular, in terms of wanting growth for our county, really inspiring what we call workforce reskilling, right? So we have populations of folks out there that we want to really get them these digital skills so that they'll have access to higher-paying jobs and have access to a wider variety of jobs. But the problem is, really, for decades, we've been ignoring the digital divide. And really, our problem exists down here on this spectrum. And until you've attended to the digital divide and moved people to digital equity, you can't get to workforce and professional reskilling. You kind of, you not kind of, you have to crawl before you can walk. And so really, the work that the STEM Alliance is focusing on is down here. We're working in this area here because we think it's been completely overlooked. Again, just to review kind of some of the common myths. One common myth is that kids are digital natives, they don't need computer instruction. This is really a very big false understanding. Computers are tools, they are not teachers. And just giving someone a tool does not mean that they're gonna learn how to use it. And all kids, but especially those who have limited opportunity to practice due to failed lack of ownership, all kids need direct computer instruction to really become highly computer fluent or digitally fluent. Another myth is that, well, at least low-income individuals might have access at their work. This is again problematic because it does not allow them access to create those same digital efficiencies in their life, and it doesn't allow them to participate in their life in a lot of those digital opportunities that most of us have. How can we give people devices they might use them for unsafe activities? The truth of the matter is those unsafe activities are actually available on a cellphone as well. And the fact of the matter is that we are, we don't tell folks when they go to the library what they can or can't read or what they can do on the computers in different locations. We need to understand that the intentionality and the purpose of the devices are really being used for exactly that which they should be used for. And that cellular access and smartphones will solve this problem. We touched on this earlier. A smartphone is a wonderful development, but I think any one of us can think of a large list of things that we don't like to do on a smartphone. I think number one on that list would be applying for a job. That is not an effective way to present yourself properly by trying to complete a job application on a smartphone. The other that we talked about is schools will take care of this. And that is, again, this issue of ownership versus loners. The other thing about the school environment is that that is fantastic, but then when a child graduates, what happens? Hopefully, they're going off to an institution of higher education or hopefully, they're going off to improve their digital skills, to look at work opportunities that would leverage those. If they don't have a device, if they went from having access to suddenly having no access, we're really severing their opportunity stream very quickly. So the schools are doing enormous amounts of positive work, but that is not a solution to the digital divide. So our responses have been twofold, and I'm just gonna tell you briefly about those two programs. The first is our virtual mentoring program. This program, we pair young adults and adult volunteers with low-income children for online virtual mentoring on a weekly basis. So our pool of volunteers, young adults and adults, are working with kids who are sitting in that digital divide and we're providing one-to-one mentoring on a regular basis with kids through this program. There are three core goals of the virtual mentoring program. The first is digital fluency, the first and most primary goal. When you work one-to-one, you can provide digital fluency skills. This could be as simple as how to copy and paste something. Or it could be something like switching identities in your Chrome browser. This was a big issue at the start of the pandemic and still is for those who don't have digital fluency skills. It's shared devices. And so they were logging in to do schoolwork, but they were under their siblings' identity. So that type of digital fluency skill is a major focus of the virtual mentoring program. Social-emotional mentoring, like any good mentor program, and then homework help and academic practice. The second program that we're working on is Digital Equity Now. This is a very simple and nationally-tested model as an intervention to the digital divide. And we are the only nonprofit that is implementing it with this specific approach here in Westchester County. This Westchester County-wide initiative works to provide low- and moderate-income clients with a device, Wi-Fi connectivity, and a minimum of fifteen hours of tech education. That's our distribution package for the Digital Equity Now program. Digital Equity Now is.
How's the connectivity, connectivity achieved?
We use hotspots.
Okay.
Yep. So these are hotspots, and typically, it's twelve months of hotspot connectivity, unlimited.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. This model works through a community-based distribution model. So the STEM Alliance does not know every person with need in the county, but our partners do. Our partners are already working with families and households that have need for different reasons. And so we partner with those organizations. It could be a mental health group, it could be an after-school enrichment group, it could be a group working with formerly incarcerated individuals or a rehabilitation, rehab group in terms of drug rehabilitation. So our partners know the clients. So what we provide is we provide training, the device packages, the curriculum, inventorying the devices, the warranties on the devices. The partner provides the client enrollment, the site-based support educator, and ongoing support once the classes come to an end. And our clients, as I mentioned, could range from parents, for example, parents in a Head Start program or workforce reentry, young adults or children. So we have a wide range of clients and samples of partners that we're working with are groups like the Community Resource Center, the Guidance Center, Carver Center, the Westchester Jewish Community Services. So those are our partners who are out in the field that help to identify those clients and that we work with for these distributions. I think the other thing that I'd really like to emphasize about the work that we're doing with virtual mentoring and that we've learned, are kind of lessons that we learned from the field. We also took the co-op summer enrichment program. Village of Amerenek is a huge supporter of that program. We took that program and we converted it to a virtual program this summer and combined it with the Digital Equity Now distribution. So over a hundred and almost a hundred and sixty children left co-op this summer with that digital equity package. And they had had a virtual mentor all summer, working with them one-to-one every day for an hour, providing these digital fluency skills. And these are some of the lessons that we took from that. First, one-to-one is a game changer when it comes to digital fluency. And I think any one of us can appreciate that. We can appreciate the moment that we've been on a device and it's not doing what we want. And we don't want to look up a group course and say, oh, we'll take that group lesson for five weeks, starting next Thursday. Right? What we want is one person who's gonna help us with the problem and that we can go back to that person if we get stuck again. So one-to-one, that virtual mentoring model is a game changer when it comes to digital fluency skills. The other thing is that it's active, not passive. These are real photos from our program this summer. This is a co-op counselor working with his mentee online. It was vibrant and it was incredibly active the whole summer and as well as our virtual mentoring program, which is going on right now. And that virtual can be alive and real. Over here on the left, you have a virtual mentor who set up an entire chess problem. And this is the laptop with the mentee facing that chess problem, and they are playing chess together as an enrichment activity. Here on the right, you have a mentee who brought her sister over to do it aloud. And over here, you have the virtual mentor. There's that little image again. This D, like David, that's actually the supervisor who's supervising this virtual mentor. So there's a lot of checks and balances built into the program, so this is very safe and very high-quality. So, you know, I really just wanted to give you both a broad-stroke overview, a little bit of a sense of where our community is at, and also to let you know that there are real solutions and that we take, you know, great pride in being able to work in a community that is striving to close that digital divide and really that knows that the time is now, that we need digital equity now.
Meg, let me ask you a twofold question. What can the average person watching us at home and us as elected officials do to help facilitate this?
That's a great question. So right now, I believe our virtual mentor program is almost full in terms of needing volunteers. So we do welcome volunteers from the community to serve as virtual mentors. However, there are times where we then may open up and be serving, we might be creating a virtual mentoring opportunity in a different community. So we're actually being asked to build this program in other communities. So on our website, lmstemalliance.org, there is a virtual mentoring page and you can look to click that you want to be a virtual mentor. The second thing, obviously, is that this program, the Digital Equity Now distributions, as well as the virtual mentoring program, need financial support. We accept and welcome donations to give you a sense of the, how money can be used. You know, the hotspot with the twelve months of, twelve months of unlimited connectivity is about two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars a year. So that's a very, very concrete donation that people can make. The entire package with the device is about five hundred dollars per client. In terms of the package with the education, that's about more like a thousand dollars. So there are very real markers, but a donation at any level is gonna make a difference in terms of helping us serve more clients. In terms of the municipalities, I think there are a couple of things. One, we need to continue to ask our elected officials, all the way up to the state level, to hold our internet service providers to task for what's going on with the affordability factors. I think that there are clear and I think there needs to be, let's say that, I think there needs to be stronger transparency. There's, I am not an expert on kind of the fiscal scenarios as to why our internet affordability is so off the charts in this country. But my understanding is that we're not asking enough questions and we're not holding the internet service providers to more transparent responsibilities about their costs and their and, you know, what they're, what the benefits are that they're gaining, especially because we provide subsidies to those providers. I think the other thing, obviously, is municipal Wi-Fi and how the village wants to go forward with creating municipal Wi-Fi options and strengthening that access. That would, of course, be incredibly helpful, but certainly, real equity is having access in your home. And that means conquering the affordability issue. And I think that that needs to be, that the local municipalities need to push that demand and that conversation back to the state to have that, that leverage where those subsidies are being provided.
Good answers. Would you be willing to give this slideshow to our deputy clerk? And she can put it on our website so people can access it?
Absolutely.
Sally Robinson sure will contact you. You've talked to Sally today, right?
Yes, I have her email.
Sally will facilitate that. Thank you, Sally. Any questions aboard?
Meg, on this last point, if, if at any point you see an opportunity for us as board to write directly, just, just let us know, give us, give us a signal and, because we, of course, are interested, but if we don't know, when, what, with the more. when, what, when the moment comes, just let us know and we can certainly support.
I absolutely will. I do believe that Shelley Mayor's office is working on a, you know, remote learning accessibility bill during the time of COVID. And again, I applaud that. On the other hand, that doesn't really address the digital divide that we've been ignoring that has been brewing, you know, for a long time. So, you know, I think the other point though that is Victor really to consider too is that we don't have to wait for the opportunity to raise it or to support things. I think we also need to ask it. So when we're meeting with our county legislators, when we're meeting with our state elected officials, we need to raise that and to say, this is something that we know is causing a disruption of opportunity. And that is, let's say, marginalizing both economic and civic participation in our communities. And so we want to know how that's being handled on the state level. So I think it's also us raising it to them.
Okay.
I think it's one of the greatest presentations I've ever had sat through. You're very articulate, well-spoken and very meaningful. And I'm glad you pointed out what was new to help. I do have one question though. Because somebody asked me yesterday what to do with their slightly-used cellphone, which is a year old because they were trading up to a smartphone. Would these, giving them to you be of any help or not?
Thank you for that question. And obviously, as the STEM Alliance, we also really support sustainability and, you know, e-recycling, e-waste recycling and such. We are not actually doing that yet. And again, our work does not kind of come from, you know, independent brilliance. We actually work with the National Digital Inclusion Alliance to develop these, the kind of core concepts behind the Digital Equity Now program. And we are learning from peers across the country. And therefore, what we've been taught and told is when you're coming out of the gates, work with new devices. Because the process of collecting and recycling devices and obviously security of the device, the privacy and security on used devices, that's like a whole other very important but separate type of work. So I am sad to say that we are not collecting those devices. We do have e-waste recycling just in our towns and villages. But I believe that what you want to look up is, I think it's called People to People, is a national organization that collects devices. But we are not working with recycled devices at this time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Meg, thank you very much for everything you do.
I really, really welcome that you invited me, Tom, and that I know that the trustees care so much about every factor that's an element of opportunity and access for all. So I just really, really appreciate the opportunity to share this information and to stay in touch and to continue elevating this important work.
Thank you, Meg.
Thank you for coming.
The job you're doing. Good night. Thank you for sharing.
Thanks again. Take care.
Good folks, that was a great presentation. You're right, good. I'm going to do communication to the board and then I'm going to take something out of order. I'm going to do the bench, the benches, because there's a resident in the audience and I don't want her to wait all night. Glenn, you got your hand up?
Good evening, board members. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm loud and clear.
Number one, I'm a little dismayed because we're supposed to be able to get back to normal and take off our, get our masks off when things got back to normal. The Jets are zero and seven. How much back to normal do we need to get before we can take off our masks? You know? And the last time I wore a mask for this long, I had a pillowcase with twenty pounds of candy in it. So that's our Halloween humor for the night.
Thank you.
A couple of items. I was watching the work session. You were talking about the courts. Addition to the courts, and I don't know why we haven't done this, we have our own jail cells. And it's not like they're loaded up with prisoners every single night. We pay to make sure that there's somebody to watch if somebody's in the cell by state law. Why can't we combine the jail cells with either the, with the town of Amerenek or town of Ry and save on the cost of having a person have to sit and watch the prisoners? I asked this probably about ten years ago. Also, when you take prisoners and you drive them up to Westchester County, why can't we, if both municipalities have prisoners, why can't we share that service? Because you're spending a lot of money having an officer watching one prisoner is here in the village of Amerenek. Town of Amerenek has nobody, village of Larchmont might have one. Town might have two, we might have one village. And each of those municipality by law has to have an officer that checks on the prisoner every twenty minutes. So that expense is there and you have to keep somebody in, in the police station in case you do get a prisoner. So I think as you're looking at the courts, you might look for the efficiency of having just one central jail for maybe the village, the town and Larchmont and have that as a shared service and have the transportation of prisoners as a shared service. Why does each municipality have to send their own people up to Westchester County? If you have three prisoners, why can't you transfer all three of them from the different municipalities at the same time? You also, please be aware, we have Halloween coming up this weekend. If you're going to trick or treat, you know, you can still safely have the kids, put a table outside your house. And for people like me who are a little older, get the reacher, that six-foot reacher. And then still, you know, you can wear your mask, you can have your six-foot reacher and just put the candy in the bag. Or what I'm going to do, I know I got some kids in the neighborhood that I like. I am going to pre-buy the candy, put it in bags and drop it off to the kids. That way, it's safe. They can still have their candy for Halloween and enjoy themselves. So be creative out there. Let's not, you know, wreck the holiday for the kids. Let's, you know, think out of the box a little bit. If they can't come to you, you can go to them, leave a pre, pre, a little pre-package for them. And let's keep, everybody, let's get out of the doldrums a little bit and have a little bit of fun. Thank you.
Okay, the next up is Kuzella Marquin. And if I've mispronounced your name, please, I apologize.
No, that's fine. It's Kuzella Marquin. I missed the meeting about two weeks ago when you all sort of addressed some of the things in the budget. You know, to Glenn's point about just thinking about where to cut. I'm just curious about a specific line that references payments around the Goldstein matter, which I think someone has also asked you, the mayor, before around, you know, whether we as taxpayers are paying any part of that lawsuit that Ms. Goldstein has against the village. And so I was just wondering, it's on, you know, the minutes from the nine twenty-nine meeting on page thirty-six of that report. And it's just a question that I have around why, you know, expenses around calls regarding her case are listed as things that we've paid out of pocket from taxpayer money.
The short answer is that currently we are being sued by Ms. Goldstein and we are providing a defense and the defense cost money.
Okay, well, that's the short answer. And I believe that in the past you have said that that's not something that the taxpayer is in taking a hit on. So I just wanted some clarity on that. Thank you.
Just let me clarify. What I had said before was that when Ms. Goldstein had a hearing before the Ethics Board, that the village was not paying our attorney to represent the Ethics Board at that time because that was included in his retainer. The village attorney is now representing the Ethics Board in that lawsuit and that is a non-retainer item. I just want to clarify.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. This Jane Dorian. Jane?
Jane, unmute your microphone.
Okay, I did. Okay, so I missed the previous meetings in which you discussed parking issues in the village. So I live at nine five three West Boston Post Road in a co-op. And I've been here for many years, like thirty years. So it came to my attention and others in the co-op that, so there are two issues. One issue came before us and we were made aware of the possibility of installing parking meters on Boston Post Road. While I understand that that makes sense for businesses, it doesn't make sense to put it in front of a residence. So a co-op is a residence. As you know, in most households, both a husband and wife have to work. They both have cars. Therefore, it's very important to have a space in which to park a second car. The co-op gives you one space. So financially, it's important for families. And in living in a community, it doesn't make sense in front of your residence to have a parking meter. Secondly, suddenly, for the past pretty much thirty years, we have been able to park right in front of nine five three across from the high school, an hour area right in front of the co-op. And there were no signs that seemed to indicate that there is restricted parking to ninety minutes. The signs either had the arrow pointing away, meaning left or right, or the arrow was covered up. Suddenly, a new sign was installed. People are getting tickets for parking in front of their own residence. And it just doesn't make sense for the village to do that to a residence. I could understand it for any business, a limited time to park or a parking meter, but not for a residence. You have to realize, I'm sure most of you have driveways and garages, but people who live in a co-op that is affordable, but also very middle-class, very nice, there is nowhere else to park if you have, if you put these signs everywhere where there are homes. So that, it just seems to me such a poor decision. And to now enforce it after like twenty-five or thirty years of not enforcing it is making the whole co-op and people around it so upset. And I don't understand what's in it for the village to do that to their, you know, it's the friendly village. People care about what happens here. I just feel that is misguided. Not only are we doing it during a pandemic, but almost any time, I would not put meters in front of homes or co-ops and I would not put restricted three-hour, ninety-minute, I mean, sorry, ninety-minute parking in front of a residence. It makes it so difficult. Just think of weather-related issues. Think of snow. Think of all the things. A person has to park three, a woman coming home late at night and then parking very, very far away. Doesn't make sense. So if you have unlimited parking near the homes, that makes the most sense, not a ninety-minute parking. So that's my, I don't know if you are allowed to comment while on the issue I'm raising, but or if you could tell me how else can we make this important enough for the board members and the mayor to take this under advisement and and then have a dialogue with us, speak for us?
Ms. Dorian, you know, I think we have heard this more than once. That's more than fair to say. I think it's an issue that we have to look at in the future. And I think that the board will be discussing this again.
Okay, I appreciate that. I thank you. And I am, you know, very impressed with how, I have to just say, how voting is being done in the village. I think, you know, the village does so many things so well. And I just hope this issue is an issue that you can find a solution so that it serves the community and yourselves.
Thank you, Ms. Dorian.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Gina Vines.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I wanted to ask two questions, actually offer something and ask a question on the traffic. I don't know if this helps or if it was discussed and I've missed it, but when my son was living in Massachusetts, he lived in a home that was a two-family home and they had no parking for him. So everyone parks on the streets. It was a nightmare like it is in the flats now. They, he was able to purchase for twenty-five dollars, I believe, for the year. He was given from the village where he was in Somerville, a permit for his car that he would use to park on the street and he had to put it on his dash. And he was also given one guest permit that he could use if we visited or a friend visited, so they could park their car. Otherwise, they would get towed. That was just, I don't know if that helps in the future because of the amount of cars we now have in this village, which seems to outnumber the number of people by, you know, two cars at least per mailing address, it seems. The second thing is I had asked a question in emails of you. I haven't heard back about this new program where you pay on your cellphone. It requires, it's in the village Park Mobile. Over here by the train station, they do not have an option to pay a meter. You must use the Park Mobile. I had investigated it and there were some serious complaints about the safety of using this application, problems with it. With our IT phones and our work, we can't put these kind of programs on our phones because our systems won't allow it for security purposes. They track you. There's a lot of issues, people like or don't like. However, one of the contractual things I saw was that the village had a contract where it said, if someone uses that Park Mobile app and goes into the village and wants to get a pizza and they use the app, the app requires you like the pay toll where you have a wallet and you put so much money in and they did it that account. Otherwise, you have to call them up and it takes a long time because I tried to call them and reach them on the phone. It was a good six-minute wait. But I got them. And then you can put money on a credit card. Again, if you set up a wallet. It was very convoluted. The problem is, it seems that there's a twenty-five cents charge for each time you park. So if you pull in a parking space, you're paying twenty-five cents. It's supposed to go to the village. But the company puts a one-dollar minimum on as well. So it's a dollar twenty-five charge every time you park. If you go and you're there ten minutes because you're picking up your shoes or your pizza and you leave, they make the profit of whatever money was left in that dollar that was the minimum. Meanwhile, if Joe Schmo comes in behind me and just pays the meter a quarter, he paid him a quarter to park. I paid a dollar twenty-five for the same amount of time. Something's very wrong with that. And I think it's unfair in a lot of ways. So I think it needs to be looked at. I don't see the reason anybody would ever want to use the Park Mobile app. If they realize this is what's going on at the train station, they're stuck. But here, and again, of course, if your company won't let you put it on their phone, on a work phone, they can't put the app on their phone. So it just presents a lot of problems and it's not the friendly village. It's a very frustrating village and elderly people I know older than me do not have smartphones. So I'm hoping that all of this is taken into consideration, whatever meters you put in, maybe credit card meters. I don't know. So I'm hoping that all of this is taken into consideration, whatever meters you put in, maybe credit card meters, I don't know. I am certainly not knowledgeable about this, but those are just problems I encountered with trying to use this app and looking into it. And if I'm reading this wrong, please tell me that I am, because that's what I interpreted in my trying to get involved with this app.
I don't have a question or answer off the top of my head, but it's something to look at, certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next up is Ms. Daria L. Please give your name.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I wanted to to further ask you questions from, from a speaker from, I think she was three people ago. Because I, I think that there are still some lingering questions about the, the financials that she brought up. Sorry for that. So if I understand correctly, you just specified that the village is in fact paying someone to sue us. I'm looking at an invoice right now, which is from the law firm hired by Goldstein to bring a Article seventy-eight bill against the village. And in fact, in front of me as well is yet another Article seventy-eight bill from October thirteenth, and this is just baffling to me, and I think that the people of this village would like an explanation as to these. Why are we paying for these two lawsuits against us? Thank you.
I think I explained this before, we are not paying for the lawsuit against us. We are paying, when Ms. Goldstein was in front of the Ethics Board, that was paid for because of the village code. Her attorney for the Ethics Board was paid for. As of right now, she's suing us under an Article seventy-eight New York State Court, and those bills are not being submitted. She's paying for that lawyer, and we're paying for all lawyers to defend. Mr. Spalzino. Have I misspoken?
No, you have not. I mean, only to the extent that there are two lawyers defending the bills, one for the Board of Trustees and one for the Ethics Board.
Okay. Well, then, hopes clarify. Ma'am. Okay. We're gonna take that item out of order. We're gonna go to a new business for being the resolution accepting three benches in Harbor Island Park. And we'll take them one at a time. Whereas, Mr. Nathalie Joseph has desire of donating a bench and plaque to the Village of Amerik and Harbor Island in memory of Shawna Joseph. We thank the Joseph family for this bench, and I need a motion to accept the donation. Dan made the motion. Wait one second.
Second, with thanks.
Well, we're seeing a whole roll. Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Batches?
Yes.
Lucas?
You're on mute, Nora.
Yes. Thank you.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution acceptance and donation of a bench in Harbor Island Park, and this is a a special one. This is from Ms. Liliana. They're all special. I didn't mean to say that. They are all special. But this one has a specific purpose other than memorialize family members for a greater purpose. Ms. Liliana Yaza Reid and Riverrise LLC, a desirous of donating a bench or plaque to the Village of Amerik in Harbor Island Park in memory of all the babies who died too soon. Ms. Yazid is desirous to provide a space for grieving and healing among those who have experienced infant loss, miscarriage, stillbirth, or abortion. She understands this type of loss because of her own journey in losing father for babies. She wants parents who have experienced this loss to know they have a space, they are seen, and we remember the lives that was lost. This is a community effort and raising funds, so it's a community dedicated bench. We thank her. She is a member of a longtime illustrious family in the Village of Amerik, and thank you for this donation. And we appreciate it. Anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Well, we're seeing them. Trustees, Winthrop?
Really a lovely thought. Yes, yes.
Batches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, and thank you very much for the generosity and for the help that you've given to women who have lost a child in this way. Thank you very much.
There's a gentleman, Ron Sino, who has his hand up. Does he want to talk on this issue?
Jane Dorian mentioned the parking meters in front of Oriental Gardens. Could I just at least ask why you're considering not putting the meters there? That in the interim, the police do not hand out tickets, at least until there's some decision and some advance notice to all the residents who live there?
Okay, thank you, sir. That is a, a, a point we will raise, but that is a fair point to bring up.
Okay, and then how do we get notified, sir? I'm sorry, once a decision is made?
It'll, it'll be at a public meeting. It'll be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you all very much for all you do. Good night.
Thank you.
Ms. Yazid Reid would like to say something?
Yes, yes, hi. Thank you guys for passing this vote. I just wanted to say that it was a fundraiser so that the, the community raised the funds for this. So it wasn't just my businesses, under my business, Riverrise, but the community raised the funds to help get this bench, so I didn't want it to be just, it was a me thing, so it was a community effort.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and thank you to the community and to whoever helped in the donations.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night, ma'am.
You too.
The next bench donation is acceptance of a bench donation in Harbor Island Park. Ms. Grace Fassolino is desirous of donating a bench and plaque to the Village of Amerik in Harbor Island Park in memory of Peter Anthony Fassolino. And we thank the Fassolino family for their generosity. Anybody have any questions or concerns or would like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes, with thanks.
Batches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, going back to the regular agenda. Thank you for indulging me. First item on the general public hearings. First one is a public hearing on PLH twenty-twenty, mending chapters three forty-two and a three forty-eight rate fees to be charged in lieu of dedicated parkland. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Batches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you. What this is, in sum and substance, is this is a law that would affect units that, that buildings all affordable, meaning every, every apartment or house is an affordable unit based upon the guidelines that we have in our code. The affordability percentage would affect the relief from the park fee, the recreation fee. I think this is a small step in the struggle to realize more affordable housing for this community that we need. And, you know, we always talk about keeping the economic and the ethnic diversity, and hopefully that's difficult to maintain, but hopefully this will be a step in our right direction. And I think we should be developing, you know, encouraging this type of development that is all affordable, that services people who we want to keep in this community. I think, you know, we were talking before about Alice, asset limited, income constrained, but employed. I think that fits a lot of people in this day and age. It's supposedly thirty-five percent of our population. It fits. If you're making fifty-five thousand dollars, that might seem like a lot of money. But if you, if you're spending two thousand dollars a month in rent, then, you know, that's, that's more than half of your take-home pay. And it costs a lot to eat and all the other things that people need to live around here, cars and computers and such. So I think that the, the ability to give a little break to people on this is a good thing. Does anybody on the board have any questions or concerns or comments? I know we talked about this a lot.
I, I hope this can encourage development of hundred percent affordable units in the village.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good start. It'll help, and I'm glad that Tom brought this up.
Thank you. Mr. T. Glenn had his hand up, then it's down.
Nobody.
Nobody? All right, nobody has any comments? Would somebody like to make a motion closing the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Batches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Murphy?
Hi, and thank you all very much. I think, you know, this is a journey of a thousand miles. Well, it starts with the first step. Thank you. Well, we didn't pass the law. I was just closing the public here. The, I would like to make a motion that we adopt this law.
Second.
Mr. Fusco? Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Batches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, and thank you very much. Thank you all for your votes, and I think this is a good, a good start. The next up is public hearing on PLLE twenty-twenty, mending chapters two forty and three forty-two requiring setback from water bodies. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Before we make a motion, Ms. Mayor, I'm concerned that I don't, I, I don't mind hearing from the public, but I believe that there are issues that the Harbor Commission has raised in terms of documentation. And that we don't have, that we may not have had the, all of the documentation that we were required to have.
Okay, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
Well, trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Batches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Mr. Spalzino, you would like to give a little background on this?
Sure, Mayor. This is the this is the result of a portion of the law that the Village Board adopted last year, I think it was last year, regarding number of affordable housing initiatives. And in the course of that, there were some changes to how the projects that had a frontage on the water were, how the law was applied to them. And what the board has done here, after a lot of consultation with other boards, is decide that the permit that was granted by the planning board formal, formerly should now be granted by, or be, the, the subject of consideration by the zoning board. And subject to a number of considerations, more detailed than there were before, which were largely just kind of planning considerations. So there are more detailed environmental considerations and waterfront considerations in this law. But it was, it restores the ability to build subject to a permit.
Anybody on the board have any questions or concerns, Mr. Natchez?
I understand that the CAF was not delivered to the Harbor and Coastal Zone Management Commission, and the question is, I couldn't find it in any of the backup in the past meetings. Do, was the CAF completed?
My understanding is the CAF was completed, and I didn't think it was a concern that they didn't have it. I'm looking at William's email.
That's just what I was looking at. Yeah, we got one from William and then one from Kathy Zabel. Just tonight, as we, during the course of our meeting.
Right.
But the one from Kathy, does that address the CAF being not there either?
She, so Williams came first, and he said that the planning board was working on the recommendation, which then came shortly thereafter from Kathy Zabel. But the zoning board adjourned the matter till its November fifth agenda. And then HCZM issued a determination of inconsistency because they didn't have, did not have enough information. So I'm assuming that might be the CAF. I, I don't know what. So I watched that meeting.
They issued a determination, finding it not consistent, because historically, if they don't have all the information that they need, when it's time for them to make a consistency determination, they find it not consistent. In this case, what happened was within sixty-five days of a seeker determination, they're supposed to find an application consistent or not consistent. That succeed, the seeker determination, I believe, was made in March, and so they thought to be consistent with their normal processes, they would find the application not consistent, and then revisit it once they were able to actually review it and send their comments to the Board of Trustees.
So in order for us to adopt the law, if we don't have a consistency determination that says it is consistent, then we have to override their determination.
You would, but I think they will be coming back to you. And I don't know if the, the public hearing will be open for this longer, what the board will ultimately decide to do, but I believe their goal is to come back to you with comments, because they're having a work session at the beginning of November where they will address it and comments back.
So it seems like we have to leave time for the zoning board and HCZM to come back with comments.
Yeah.
You certainly can do that.
Yes.
Just to be clear, you don't override HCZMC the consistency determination because they only make a recommendation to you with regard to a law.
But, but I, we have to do something that says we don't agree with their recommendation and explain why.
In writing.
It's, why we say it's consistent.
You do your own consistency determination, what you do.
But in terms of the CAF, my understanding is that I believe in one of the resolutions. Let me just pull it up so that I say it with confidence. Is the resolution for scheduling the public hearing addresses the seeker. And so this one says, let's see. I don't actually see it here. I know that it was typed as an unlisted action, and this was, I believe, back in March, on March eighteenth. And I don't see any indication from HCZM that they didn't have the CAF or that there was a missing documentation. It was more a concern. Oh.
Yeah, can I ask, well, go ahead, Nora.
Well, March eighteenth would have been an HCZM meeting, because we met March ninth and then again March twenty-third. So why would HCZM have been typing it if we are the lead agency? So why would H C Z M have been typing it if we are the lead agency?
My, I apologize. My resolution is dated March eighteenth. That was likely for the twenty-third.
Okay, okay.
Victor?
Because this is very confusing. The reference to seeker confused me, threw me off. Because in this case, this is, because it's a law and it's specifically addressed in the code. It says this commission shall render a written decision. Well, first it says that the Board of Trustees shall request a written recommendation regarding consistency from the H C Z M C and provide the permission with a copy of the C A F and relevant material supporting the documentation. So I, I did quickly try to, to understand why they, why they issued the non-consistency. And they said it because they didn't have these materials in their files in the meetings they had a couple of weeks ago. And then, but then the important piece is that says the commission shall render its written recommendation setting forth the reasons within thirty days of the referral, unless such period is extended by the Board of Trustees for a directed action consented by the applicant.
Right.
So i- in this case, are we going to give them more time? What do we need in order to get, to get clarity? What, what their recommendation, the ideas, their input? Because I think at the end of the day, what we want is very simple to get, and that's why my email to you is, what did the different boards tell us? I think we just, I hear, we just got a mess, an email, but actually the code requires that we hear from them. So, so do we have? Do we have anything in writing from the H C Z M C?
Not that I'm aware of. I think William Long would be better suited to answer that question.
But you were at the meeting, right? So did they?
Right, but they.
Did they vote?
They voted it not consistent. And so I don't know if from that point forward, they then wrote something that either went to William and was supposed to be forwarded to the board, or if that hasn't been done yet. I'm not sure on that portion of it, but the thirty days, so the thirty-day timeframe that does apply, and you, you can grant them an extension. But there's also a different portion of the code that talks about a sixty-five-day timeframe from the date that it's typed under seeker. And so if, if the board does not find, or isn't, hasn't come to a conclusion on application within that sixty-five-day timeframe, it's an automatic, I think it's an automatic consistency. So they didn't want to have this be found consistent when they felt that they still needed some additional information and wanted to provide input to the board.
So Christie, at your, at the meeting that you were at, what, what was the discussion in terms of what they were looking for that they didn't have?
They, they, they want to provide additional commentary about it. I believe they would like the permit to be under their purview. So they are going to be circling back again with some comments about the, the permit being under their purview. I can't remember their specific concerns for consistency, but I know that they felt again that they weren't ready to, they wanted more information, more discussion with, with the board before they would be able to make a determination.
Didn't they give us that input the last time we referred to them?
They did, but upon re-review of the law, they, they would like to discuss it again.
That's, that's H E M C. How about the zoning board? Did they send us anything that you know?
I do not attend the zoning board meeting.
So they're sending us something, they're going to discuss it at their November fifth meeting. That was in the, that was in the email from Will.
It was at five ten P M. For anyone who's. And then Kathy Sable did send the planning board's comments, email at five thirty-four, if you're looking. And it has to do mostly with definitions, but also, you know.
And also the structure of how we're organizing.
And why it's Z B A.
Right.
Which we've discussed until we're blue in the face.
We consider those inputs and then extend.
I think we should, I mean, I think we should, you know, like, I, I think we should, I don't think, I think we should wait to get the zoning board information, information and maybe, and, and consider the planning board's stuff too. But we won't, I don't think we'll have either by our next meeting, will we? Does that work out? Does the schedule work out?
Why don't, why don't we, I mean, I, I think we should, there's a resident with their hand up. I think we should, after we're finished our discussion, we should allow her to speak. But I would recommend that we, after the discussion, we adjourn this to the last meeting in November.
Yeah, I.
So the twenty-third, that would be the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Because that covers, that get, that's after H C Z M.
Right.
If they haven't spoken, then they have to hold their peace. Can I call Ms. Van. Then we can get back to our discussion. Woggy, you want to hit? Ms. Van I.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'm very concerned about this law because I think there are tremendous implications that are not being addressed. Most of you know I live in the flood plain. I have flood insurance. I live with the same fears as the people in the flats of the flood waters spreading because of the mason being overdeveloped, the T O D overlays, the bricks more, all of these things that were done without permits and seven feet of fill and three acres of land. So what I'm concerned about here is that this law you are changing has the potential to not only create more flooding, but potentially endanger our insurance program for the village, our flood insurance rates as individual residents, and the village's ability to obtain and fast-track grant monies based on our L W R P by undermining it with this change in the law. The law is removing section twenty-two forty dash thirty of our existing code. And it's going to transfer the authority that the planning board and the Harbor Coastal Zone Committee have held for decades to protect our village, specifically regarding consistency determinations to the zoning board. That is no experience in this. This will strip away a major pillar and foundation of our L W R P. This law is not going to, is now going to allow the zoning board of appeals to issue a permit for a development fifty feet from the water in both fresh and saltwater from one end of the village to the other. From the top of the reservoir in the heights to the shores of Orient, to the flat shore acres, Green Haven. There's nobody that's going to be kept sacred from this law you are putting into effect. There may be an intent to specifically locate into specific places on the river, but you are opening up a can of worms and setting precedents that will change the entire character of the neighborhoods in every village. So the new criteria that the zoning board under this law is going to use to issue these new permits that it never did before does not include developmental impacts on the entire flood plain, which means all along our rivers, our coastlines, it only deals with where to put a structure, a parking lot, a building, anything. And it's silent in its specific requirements for evaluating any potential effects any development might have, such as the mason, which went up seven feet of fill, and we are waiting for the flood to determine how many more people in the flats are going to be sitting in polluted sewage water. This, if you change this law and huge buildings go up in the flood plain, more of them and spread the flood paint, plain out without the appropriate hydrology reports. And the residents will be stuck again. We're waiting to see what damage is going to be happening with all of this, the bricks more at the three jalapeno sites. We haven't had the flood, but it's coming. We just don't know when. The mayor said that in his own interviews. We all know it. Your board never put forth any rationale to remove the current protections that have been in place for decades. Is there a potential developmental proposal specifically that our code does not allow? So we're now changing the law to make this get pushed through. It's not a rhetorical question. I've seen that with many, many other past law changes, development that could not happen, miraculous he can after we change this law. The appropriate studies for this code change that assess the effects of any and all proposed developments have never been posted to your agenda for the last eleven months. What will control what happens at Maranic Avenue in North Barry, for example, with the dry cleaner in the buildings next to it or for sale right at the edge of the river, if they can build? We don't know what, because this is going to allow it. So the new law removes the requirement that new development be a water-dependent use. Water-dependent use is the key basis of why our L W R P was developed. This is what makes the village Maranic what it is, why people want to live here. Public access to the water for people and water-dependent economic use. This is how our law follows the Coastal Zone Management Act and the New York State Coastal Zone Program. Now, seeker inconsistency, specifically Victor, the laws require the whole entirety of the development and the law change to be fully considered for all of its cumulative effects. This involves more than twenty-four acres and more of water in this village. It's a type-one action for a seeker, but it's being called by the board an unlisted action. I can't find any evidence of any professional studies, hydrology studies, engineering studies assessing the effects that this code change is going to have on every bit of.
Ms. Van I, you've stifled yourself. Ms. Van I, if you muted yourself. Okay.
Jeannie, have to unmute your mic.
Okay, I don't know why that muted. That's very weird. I didn't touch anything. So I was saying, I'm going to leave you with this. You're not complying with seeker law. And by voting to pass the law tonight or any other night, you'll be egregiously non-compliant with consistency law on open meetings law. Because there was no coastal assessment form posted, there are no studies done looking at the effect cumulatively on the twenty-five acres that this law will change. I've watched two H C Z M meetings where the members asked for the additional time because they didn't receive a coastal assessment form, which you guys have acknowledged. So I'm hoping that is not voted on, that we pull this away and that the residents get to talk about how this is going to affect their property values, their lives, their flood insurance. Because this is far beyond one little development in one spot of this village. It is a precedent that will be set when the first permit is issued by the zoning board, where you can have development fifty feet anywhere, and there's nothing to stop it and no controls. And our L W R P is going to go out the window, and we're going to lose our abilities with the government for grants. You need to look very broadly at the effects of this and not rush into it.
Thank you.
And I'm going to say for affordable housing, what I find appalling the most is that we put these units in, these developers make a crap load of money and charge three thousand dollars for it, and they put one affordable using it, unit in. If we want to be inclusive in this village, our code should change that any development that goes up is fifty-fifty. It's not about a developer's profit. It's about the quality and the character and the care of this village and its environment in every aspect. That's what's important, not one little development that opens up, that everything can change everywhere. So shore acres, people look out, harbor heights, people look out, because this affects everybody, rich and poor. Thank you.
Mr. Tippett?
Uh, maybe I'm living in a fantasy land. Is this not to address a law that you changed eleven months ago? Am I right, or did I miss something? Can I get any input from anybody?
I don't. Living, I don't.
Twenty-five-foot law was put in at the last minute without any public comment when you made dramatic changes to the housing in the village of Mamaroneck. Am I correct?
This law is part of P L L C. About the fantasy world, I don't know.
But it was, it was added at the last minute.
Yeah.
We all know that. And it wasn't particularly looked at. It was. So let's be a little bit realistic here. This isn't a law that has been on the books in the village for eighty years. What you're actually looking to do is to adjust that people who already have a building within the buffer zone, if they are willing to upgrade their building and get out of the buffer zone a little bit, but can't completely get their building out of the buffer zone, they would still be allowed to actually redevelop their property. Am I wrong there?
I believe that's right.
The base, your basic concept is this isn't about new development. This isn't where you could go on of, of the bank of the river that has, is absolutely prime. This is about, somebody has a ninety-year-old house that is within ten feet of the river. They want to be able to redevelop their property. But in order to redevelop their property, the best they can do is maybe get twenty feet from the river. But they could do an improvement on the property to make it better. They could do better with the drainage. They could do better with, you know, different aspects of the property. But if you, if they aren't able to still stay within the twenty-five feet, the property basically is undevelopable. There's nothing you can do with it. That's what you're look, looking at with this law. That what you have to do is read the law, see if you're happy with the restrictions. I think, still think it's a little bit too restrictive. But right now, you got a situation where Hoyt Avenue, you might as well get rid of the street, because everything from Blondie's down on Hoyt Avenue can't be developed, can't, nothing can happen with it. In fact, the parking, which is all owned by the village, if you even wanted to pave that, you couldn't do it because it's below the twenty-feet buffer zone. You would lose every one of those parking spaces at the end of Hoyt Avenue. Where the, uh, uh, transfer station is, that owns by the village, that's within the twenty-five foot. People have to understand what you're looking here is you already have properties within twenty-five feet of the Mamaroneck River. They put, passed a law that said you couldn't do any development at all, leaving people basically with properties that you turned into useless. Because now you couldn't possibly do anything on the property. This is to protect the river, but also let residents of the village of Mamaroneck smartly, environmentally, redevelop properties that are currently within that twenty-foot set, twenty-five-foot setup. And to make them more environmentally friendly and still economically feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I have issues with the law too, but I, I think, I think it's best if we just let's off till the end of November. Victor, you want to say something?
Yeah, may I, yeah, let me, let me, let me, I found it. Let me see. No, let me, this is not it. Give me one second.
While Victor is looking, I was mistaken on the date. I believe it was the April, the April fifteenth meeting. And part of the April fifteenth meeting was review of the C A F and the accompanying narrative, which is on the agenda from that date.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can see this? Yeah, let, let's clarify a few things to make the, to make this a constructive conversation. The first one is the planning board way back. Let me see, I can enlarge this. Here we go. Too big. Let me go. There we go. Because the, this, this, the law existed in the books, but it didn't really have criteria. So, so precisely, you see here the mason, the planning board wave and allow the building to be, the, the, the buffer to be encroached on. You can see it here? You see it here? Right. And so the, the intent of the law is trying, it, it doesn't address, it doesn't address single-family homes. To Glenn, we've said that several times. Let's clarify that. It only affects multifamily developments, because that's what we were looking at during the moratorium. And that is the, is the, is the provision that, that was changed that you say, but let me clarify. When you say it was looked at at the very last minute, actually, it was not. It was the way it was drafted that it was. When you say it was looked at at the very last minute, actually it was not. It was the way it was drafted that it was not. We not take into account where it was in the code, whether it could be waived or not. The, the idea was it could be waived, but if you see, there were a lot of, a lot of concerns. And you see the 50 foot line was actually mapped all around, around the, the village. And we, we looked at this and during the process, there were very clear statements by different parties and in particular the Harbor and Coastal Zone Commission to say, be mindful, where are you going to place those, those multifamily places? Make sure you don't put them where people could be at risk, especially those large buildings. And, and in particular, and of course, that, that could include even, 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 even affordable. But affordable, we left, we left intact and we actually expanded possibilities for affordable housing and made it mandatory for the first time in this C2 area of the, of the village. And then the restrictions were more generally applied throughout, throughout, throughout the area. So again, not, not, you could, you could, you could see it in many ways, but it really spread out the evenness. So that argument of being even was really, look, this, this map explores what, 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 you know, we're really dealing with and how everything was considered. So it is not about really the, the high end of Mamaroneck. It is about the, the, this sensitive, very, very special areas. So two things to, to, to wrap it up. Number one, it doesn't apply to single family homes. It only applies to multifamily, large developments, precisely to avoid what happened here, right? And that's why hopefully we will consider the debate is the criteria and which of the boards will, will, will do it. We, we, we'll look at that when we, again, when we see inputs. So I thought this would, this would make a, you know, kind of help visualize the problems and what, what we need to address, you see? That, that, that I think we have to keep in mind as we review this law. Thank you.
I want to make a motion regarding this to, what is it, November 23rd?
Yes, so moved. Second.
What was the overall?
Trustees is Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you. You wait further. Order to bills. The first item is item two A. It is resolution authorizing. I'm sorry, transfers. Transfers from fund balance to pay for kayak blessing salaries of $737.50. And from village manager contractual services, $550 to pay for supplies for shade trees. Imagine that might have to do with the pruning of shade trees. Any questions? The motion.
So moved.
This is the big audit? This is the big audit? Or you only have one?
No.
No, this is the.
Oh, this is the transfer.
Just transfer.
Right.
Oh, you call a roll.
Let's see, is Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Victor?
I'm muted. Yes, yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
The next one is order to bills. Total is one. Somebody have any questions, concerns?
On page five, the bottom, the chase and land, Jason Engineering Land Survey Regarding Taylor's Lane. Can anybody explain what that is?
This is, well, two items on that. First, before Victor brings this up, because we always does about the it being charged to 1420 instead of 1440. I think that's a function of the purchase order. So I think we might need to work with August, see if we can liquidate that and take care of it so we can make sure it gets charged correctly going forward. As far as that item, I mean, I don't have the invoice in front of me, but it's, you know, ongoing work to close out the Taylor's Lane site. Victor, well, Nora asked me Monday morning, two weeks ago. Victor asked me Monday morning, Monday afternoon or evening at the meeting two weeks ago. You're basically where we are right now. This is in connection with submitting the revised operations program for the site. So we're just kind of waiting for DEC to approve that ongoing operations and maintenance program. And once they do, this will hopefully close out the site. Which I'm hoping is by the end of the year. And that's what I conferred with our engineering consultant.
Any other questions?
I have one other on page nine. Cablevision Light Path Inc. Dan?
I have to look at that, but I wonder.
Under Telephone Utilities.
You know, I, I don't have the invoice in front of me. I wonder if this might just be the last of everything before we transfer to the new service, but I can follow up and answer that question in the morning.
Follow up tomorrow.
Yes.
It's a question though.
Yeah.
Then, then, yes.
Thank you for anticipating my question. And I have a couple on page 28.
Okay.
I don't know if you know, but at the transfer station, there was a repair by 10K. What was? Lafayette? 313 Lafayette. No idea what, what.
I don't see it on page 28.
Page 28, bottom. Emergency work done at, and rear of the transfer station wall. What happened?
On the contract services. Joseph Shalali.
Oh, okay. City of Rye, and then there's like a 10th.
Oh, okay. I know we've had some issues with the, you know, rear retaining wall. I, again, I'd have to follow up on that. I, I didn't see the invoice the first time, so I can, I can check on that for you. I know we have an issue with making repairs of the wall out there.
Anybody else?
No, I got one.
On page five, you have $5,425 bill for Goldstein versus Mamaroneck. Is that the end of it right now? Obstacles here.
I, you know, I believe it is. It's been almost a year since the hearing was over. So I don't see what other bills they could have at this point. Are you, is that my bill? You're referring to my bill? My bill? I think there'll be a bill in November because we, we finally filed the papers, November, October 15th. So there's going to be some work in, in October.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, thank you. All right, Glenn has his hand up.
Yeah, um, I'm looking under contract services, $250 for traffic meeting minutes. We're, we're now paying people to do minutes at the traffic committee meetings.
Yep.
Traffic meeting minutes. It's. Oh.
Yes.
This is not new, correct? This has been going on for a while?
For many years, yeah.
That's been going on because I haven't seen that before.
Yep, it's old. I actually.
Unlegal. Up to date, I've spent $310,000 on legal. We're just entering into a contract for 335, I believe, an hour on the Hampshire matter. Um, we would actually be over in probably two meetings. Um, our contingency for, for legal matters. If you take out Bob's, Bob is scheduled to make 110 and then you have 60,000 for the boards and then you only have $370,000 for litigation. Right now you're up to $310,000 and we're in the last week in October. So you are definitely going to have to address what you're spending with the legal there. Another one, and I've asked this before. Vincent's Garage seems to be doing the maintenance on our police cars. Do we have a, has that been put out to bid? Do we have a contract with them to do the maintenance on the police cars? I mean, it makes perfect sense to me that Vincent's Garage or some entity should be doing all, all work on the cars. And our mechanic should be doing all the work on the major equipment and the trucks. But is that formalized? Have we actually put out for bid contract to, to maintain the fleet of all our police cars and our non, our non. Yes, no, maybe?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. The same thing with the, we're spending a lot of money on air conditioning services. Is that, is that based on going out to bid? J and M's been doing a ton of work, air conditioning maintenance and retail. Is that, is there a bid contract?
They're supposed to get free prices.
What's that?
They're supposed to get free quotes.
Thank you. If you can get back to Vincent's, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we did. We did have a couple of extra charges for J and M with this bill cycle. We've retrofitted the filters in the HVAC units for the Regatta to the Meriva Levens, which is supposed to help filter particulates to a much greater extent than traditional filters. We're doing the same thing with the Pavilion in light of its potential use in the, in the winter. And then also for the once each time, we're trying to, some of those costs are related to providing some additional protections for the staff.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else have any questions, concerns about the abstracted order bills? I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
What was it?
Trustees is Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. So ready to go.
Thank you.
Old business. Okay, resolution authorizing IMA, we're going to hold until the first meeting in November. Resolution scheduling, PLI 2020, appointment authority for planning board zoning members. Actually, this amends the law to the village already, the board trustees already appoints planning and zoning. This is about removing a planning and zoning board. Partly it's a decision. This was something that we hired two lawyers to give us the opinion. It was the mayor's decision based upon New York State law. Now, the board trustees wants to have that authority. And I have asked board trustees, and I will ask again, if you were going to do this, change the law to allow the board to appoint a hearing officer to make a recommendation to the board of trustees. Do not have the board of trustees as a five person hearing officer for disciplinary action. It will tie up this board days and days and days and it will not be the best way to do it. It, it, it is, this is a bad, I think it's a law that does not need to happen. And it is a law that can be made better. If, if, if you were to appoint a hearing officer, I can support this law. And I would be willing to compromise that because I think that this is a really bad idea. And it'll, it'll probably never affect any of us because we will never ever have to do this again. If history is a judge, but I, I implore you to try and please look at that option before you do this. That being said, I said my piece.
Well, I would say that we had already, so we have started to hold the public hearing. We adjourned it in August to September, but it, it wasn't put on the September meeting. So this is actually a condition of the public hearing because we did start to open it and we just adjourned it till September and then didn't hold it. And the basic, you know, the basic rationale is that appointing authority is generally a removal and appointment authority are generally the same body. And when we change the appointment authority for planning and zoning board members, we didn't change the removal authority. So it's just harmonize what happened four years ago on a referendum.
Okay, and I'm asking if you do. I'm asking that if you do that, you do it in a smart way. Because if you can look back from years ago, when the village board had to sit as police commissioners to hear disciplinary charges against police officers, it was the circus. And the, you know, a lawyer can tie you up for days and days and days. And that's what that lawyer did at the time. I, 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 please let me finish. I don't think that you want to do that to a board in the future. And what I'm asking is that you consider in this law, the ability for the board of trustees to appoint a hearing officer. As it stands now, you won't have that. The board will still make the ultimate decision, but a hearing officer will run the hearings. If, if, if you don't do that, this is just a recipe. Have miserable lives.
Tom, I understand your request and, and you know, my response would be town law gives the appointing and the removal authority to the entire town board. They do not interject a hearing officer. And in most cities, it's, it depends on who gets, who has the appointing authority. But whoever has the appointing authority typically has the removal authority and hearing officers aren't involved. So that's a new twist on it, but I think, you know, we've gotten this far with this. And I would propose that we schedule a public hearing or reschedule.
As we were talking about before, I'm just asking for a compromise, but okay.
I, I tend to agree just historically that the, when the appointment authority was moved from the mayor alone to the board of trustees, that it was just a glitch and that it should have the removal authority. I, I agree with my, my historical recollection of that time and that issue was the same as Norris. Having seen the Goldstein hearing on removal and imagining how that would have happened with the five board members all being the hearing officer or I just think it would be, we talk about legal expenses and prolonging things. It, it's just not practical. And so I think the practical addition of having a hearing officer and having the entire board decide, majority of the board would makes sense and allows a practical solution to something that would be, as we've seen, unwieldy. So I wish we could go back to the drawing board. This is going to have to go to a referendum anyway. There's plenty of time between now and the time it would be on a ballot in November of 2021. I, I would like to see us get this right.
Let me ask again, this, this, the appointing removal has to go to the voters, which is what's been done. The other piece of appointing a hearing officer can be done subsequently, correct? It doesn't, doesn't have to go to the voters. Is that correct?
It does have to go to the voters.
Does it have to go to the voters?
Yes, because when we were removing uh the authority from uh the board of trustees to be hearing officers for uh the police thing, it was a permissive, a mandatory permissive referendum. Uh, that was actually the last law that I proposed the last time I was around, and the reason I proposed it was because I didn't want any board to ever have to go through what happened there again. And I, I implore you to look at the tapes from back down, what happened. And, you know, what, I'm still talking here. You asked a question, I'm trying to answer it. You know, i- i- it definitely requires permissive referendum because you're taking power away. E- e- even if, if, if the law says you're the hearing officer, you can't delegate that unless you have a law that allows you to delegate that. That's, that, that's what happened. The village appointed a hearing officer to hear the police disciplinary matters. That hearing officer heard the disciplinary matters. He gave a recommendation to the board of trustees. Uh, the board trustees made it a, a determination based upon that recommendation. The uh police officers in question went to court in an Article seventy-eight, and they had it overturned because there was no authority. I mean, this is all stuff that, that I've been telling you guys about, and you could, you could look up. I, I'm, I'm, this is my experience. I mean, I, I, I lived this. And all I'm asking, I, you know, I, I, I think that it should be the mayor's job, but if you're not gonna make it the mayor's job, please try and do it right. There's no reason to hurry this.
So can I now turn, ask, ask Mr. Spuzzino? If this law is passed and passed by the refer, by, by the voters and the board of trustees wants to name a, 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 a hearing officer, would that have to go again for referendum?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I'd have to look at what the situation was that the mayor's referring to with regards to police officers. That may be a unique situation having to do with uh Westchester County Police Act. Off the top of my head, I can't answer that question. I can answer it in two weeks for you. Thank you. That, that'll be good.
Would you, would you consider waiting two weeks to hear the answer?
Yes, I hope we'll, I, I hope we will adjourn this until we have that answer.
You know, we already opened the public hearing. We just adjourned it to September, and we forgot to put it on the agenda. So, uh, you know, we've been through this. Um, let's say we adjourned it for two weeks. I still, I, in New York State law, in, in town law, there's no hearing officer. It's the the, the town board appoints, and the town board as a body removes.
I understand that, Nora, but it never happens, and when, when it actually has to happen in practicality, and I'm talking in practicality, it's a nightmare. I, I, I don't know why you.
I made a motion if no one wants, I made a motion. If no one wants to second it, then we'll just adjourn it for two weeks.
Second it if you wish. You have it.
Are you have a motion a second?
Yes.
Trustee Winshere?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tiford?
One question. What's the date that you, that? I'm sorry? What's the date?
We actually, we actually don't have a date.
Because it's empty.
Yeah. Why don't we do it for four weeks?
Which is, you're saying December?
November, November twenty-third.
Okay. That would allow time to get this info. Okay. With that amendment, I guess.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Resolution authorizing reimbursement for a tow vehicle. It's a vehicle that towed, shouldn't have got towed. We need to refund the money. Somebody have any questions or concerns? Oh wait, no, I'm sorry, Glenn had his hand up. I, I'm just noticing it.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment uh a little bit on uh what the mayor was saying. I actually watched the hearing of the police officers, and they had appointed a retired, I think, a state Supreme Court, uh, court judge. And basically, the lawyer at every opportunity would tell the state judge, well, you don't have any authority anyway, so I'm just gonna win this on appeal. And he must have told that person eight to ten times because it wasn't in the law that the, the, the board simply can't appoint somebody. And quite frankly, if this board was up against that lawyer, he would have the whole group of you for lunch. This guy was uh one hundred percent professional police civil rights uh, uh civil attorney, and he knew his stuff. You'd be putting yourself in harm's way or whatever board you end up, God forbid, get stuck with this in harm's way. All you have to do is look what happens when they try to fire a teacher. How long it takes? It takes months and months. Both lawyers for both sides have to be available, and every single trustee would have to be available during the day for a hearing. Every one of you, not, not at night, during the day, when the two lawyers are available. And when you talk about the, the getting rid of the teacher, though, they take eight, ten months because everybody can make it on Tuesday, March sixteenth, then everybody can make it on April first, then everybody can make it on May second.
You, you, to Glenn's point, I just want to speak up. Glenn, just let me expand upon what you said. There, there was points where that lawyer, and his name was Jonathan Lovett, I'm sure Mr. Spuzzino knows him well. He would make an objection. All five trustees would have to confer, and they would have to decide on the objection. And he just tied them into knots. And, and, and it was not fun.
No, he would, he would have had you tied, tied up for a year, two years, and you'd be paying your lawyer every step of the way.
And in this instance, we have to pay the uh, the, the other side's lawyer too.
And, and if you lose, you get to pay the other side too.
No, you gotta pay the other side no matter what.
If it's your employee, yeah, absolutely. You gotta pay both sides.
Okay.
You'd be better off giving the guy a million dollars and having him leave than all the court costs that you'd wind up with if, if that thing stretched out for two years.
I'm trying to say. All right, thank you, Glenn.
On the tow, uh, I read it. Basically, what happened is it was a mistake um with New Jersey not letting New York go. It's a, it's a shame. She should be refunded her money, and maybe in the future have something worked out with the tow company because I, I doubt this happens very o- often, but maybe the tow company splits the difference.
All right, thanks, Glenn. Uh, resolution authorizing reimbursement of tow vehicle. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Need a motion?
I'll move. Second.
What we call roll.
Trustee East Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Resolution authorized with word four C, we did four B already. Resolution establishing capital budget account for dock repair of the Maric Marina and Harbor authorization to purchase material for dock repair. Now, we talked about this and uh, I talked about asking them what the price differential was between uh wood and composite, and if it wasn't a big price differential to use the composite if they had no objections. Somebody have any questions or concerns?
No, but i- in, and maybe it isn't even just the price, you know, price differential. Maybe they hadn't thought about it. So just for them to rethink what they think is maybe the best material.
Okay, but we have, we have the fixture of.
Yeah.
Make motion, or?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We'll roll. Trustee East Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next item is resolution uh scheduling a public hearing. The P L M twenty twenty appointment authority with the village clerk treasurer. Okay? Mayor, under the New York State law, in the villages of New York State, appoints the clerk treasurer. The board of trustees wants this power for themselves. Uh, you know, this is another instance of all, all the issues that are facing this community. We're gonna have this come up, and we're gonna have, you know, a situation that's gonna require a permissive referendum, and it's gonna happen next year. And I just don't see the need for it, but sure it's gonna pass.
Mayor, I, I think this is a mandatory referendum on this one.
Oh, yeah, it's a mandatory, mandatory.
We've discussed this at length, um, and I think it's something that should be done. I'd like to uh I'd like to move the resolution.
What's the date? Do we have a date on that?
There's no date.
Do it, it's first, first meeting in December. We're getting loaded up on the twenty-third of November.
Okay, I will second that motion.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, but you know, we, we talked before about trying, okay. All right.
Put them together, no?
You know what?
You wanna put them, you wanna, Victor's saying put them together? Yeah, I mean.
Yes, one, one. Sheldon.
You know, after all we've discussed tonight, I'm really, I'm surprised this just trained keeps going.
Yeah, but it's, it's like it never happened.
Yep.
You know, we, we talked about trying to work uh in order to compromise and openness. You know, I, I offered something at the last ring that made perfect sense, and of all the problems and issues facing this community, to ask voters to go and have to work on this, uh, which is gonna be a divisive issue. And for what end? Because, you know, in my view, this is a uh a purview of the mayor's office. Uh, I'll probably never do it after I do it again, and uh, you know, why? Why? Why, why, why is this community different than the other five hundred and something? Why is this board of trustees need this when the other ones don't? But you have a motion a second.
Yeah, because that's been, that's been answered, and we've we've done it this way. So anyway, that, tho- those issues have already been, been discussed, so let's.
But they haven't been answered.
They were answered, okay. Not for you. They were answered. Just move on.
Well, I, I said my piece. Yeah, we can move on. Does anybody else want to say their piece? There's a, there's a resident who wants to say his piece. Because that's how we work. Everybody gets a chance to say their piece, even the mayor.
Here we go again. Instead of one mayor, we want five little mayors. We have gone through this in the past. It used to be two different parties, and you had a group of trustees, one that ran for mayor and wanted to now what we have is you're gonna take another position, and this has been the position of the village attorney forever, where every time the wind blows to the left, we can have another position where uh, let's, we, I don't particularly like, we'll go get somebody different. We'll go get another, an, 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 another person. Doesn't matter if he's qualified. I want the person in the job that I want, and we've been through this in the village. Why don't you look at around Village Hall? How many people you've already lost, good quality people? And by the way, every time you replace somebody, it costs you more money. Every single time that you replace a quality individual in this business, it costs more money. And if you don't think the word gets out through the community that, hey, you, you don't, don't buy in the village of Mamaronek rent because you don't know how long you're gonna be there. And if you don't think this is an insult to the re, to, to, to the people who work in the offices of the village of Mamaronek, you're sadly mistaken. If you have any respect for the people who work for the village of Mamaronek, if you have any respect for the office of mayor of the village of Mamaronek, if you want to be the mayor of Mamaronek, run for the mayor of Mamaronek. But the trustees do not have to run every single thing in the village of Mamaronek. You're better off, let the mayor do it. There's consistency. You want to have longtime employees, and you want them to be republicats. You want them, doesn't matter Republicans, Democrats, liberals, whoever's in charge. You want consistency with good quality employees, and what you're opening it up for is to turn another position in the village of Mamaronek into just another political appoint, uh, appointee depending on which way the wind blows amongst the trustees. Thank you.
Do we have a motion a second?
Yes. Cool. Trustee East Winshere?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee? The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No. Okay. Uh, scar resolution approving twenty nineteen small claims settlements. These are settlements that the town of Rye has uh made to various people uh who live in Rhine death, various homes. Uh, the village is no longer in assessing authority. So we have turned that function into the town of Rye, the town of Mamaronek. So we really depend upon them to do the due diligence, and actually, uh, we don't even have an ability to uh challenge this unless we want to actually go to court and take a case, which uh doesn't seem like. Does anybody have any question, concerns?
I, I just think this is something that we have to do, and that um there, these are the, probably the tail ends of these because we won't be doing any of the assessing anymore, correct?
No, this isn't. No, th- th- this is after we've.
Okay, right. This is, so this is, this is when people have filed their own.
Twenty eighteen. Yeah, we have, you know, this is just the town of Rye. These are what you're gonna have to pay up. Okay? Uh, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Trustee Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Resolution accepting a tree donation. Large Mon Nursery, thank you, Large Mon, is desirous of donating four Kwanzen cherry trees and ten to fifteen hydrangea bushes to the village of Mamaronek. Whereas the estimated value of these trees and bushes is between seventy-five hundred and eight thousand dollars. As a donation, it must be accepted by the village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees. As a donation, it must be accepted by the village of Marnik trustees. Somebody have any questions or concerns?
No, and we actually got another email from the nursery, from Joanna at the nursery, saying that she had a few more things to donate as well. So we might be doing this again in two weeks, so thank them.
Okay.
I'd like to show move.
Second.
Trustee Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tifor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution establishing budget for capital budget account for influence, filtration remediation project. Dan, you wanna talk to this?
Yes, um, we are soon to go out to bid for the I and I nomination in various sections of the village. I believe it's, uh, seven, eight, 10, 11, 13. The, uh, this will establish a capital account and a budget for the project. As I mentioned during work session, we've already incurred certain costs related to mapping that's required for the bid document that Keller Sessions performed for us. So we're asking you to establish the capital budget account with the aforementioned budget.
Have any questions or concerns?
No.
Yeah, this is something that needs to be done, needs to be done.
Have to do it. Have to do it.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
What we still? Trustees Winshere?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tifor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Communication to board round two. Come on, one, drive line.
Uh, you were discussing the parking on Boston Post Road. Number one, that, that 90 minutes has been there for, forever. It's sporadic in enforcement because they have to mark the tires. But they've been doing that since I was in high school. And the problem used to be that the high school kids took all the parking spots. That's also the problem. If you put metered parking and then you had non-metered parking in front of that building, well, you got people from the town of Marnik, uh, all because that parking lot gets full. And you have high school and there's that, those, you know, those spots would be open and people would go to the non-metered spots. So that doesn't solve the problem. What you might wanna do is change to two hour parking and then not start the meters until 10 o'clock in the morning. Giving the residents plenty of time to move. And those meters are done at 6 o'clock anyway, so anybody could park overnight. And you could park there on Sundays and holidays anyway. Would it be some, a slight inconvenience to some of the residents there? Yes, but it's either you're gonna have the meters or not have the meters, because if all you do is you have parking spots in one location where there's no meters, you know as well as I do, everybody wants to save that quarter. Everybody wants to save the 50 cents. You'd have a completely different problem where everybody would look to jump, jump in those spots and they just wouldn't turn over. And again, the restrictions, maybe they put a new sign up and everything, but the parking restrictions have been on Boston Post Road for 40 years. There's absolutely nothing new about the 90 minute parking that they were talking about. So, uh, everybody, please have a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. I know I'm tough on you trustees.
Halloween.
Yeah, I, I know, I know I'm tough on you as trustees, but you know what? I realize you're very intelligent people, but sometimes you get locked into something that just isn't good for the village. And I'm trying to wake you up. You can't have five Cinderellas. Maybe they do that in grammar school. But you can't have five Cinderella. Broadway shows don't have five Cinderellas. And there should be one person in the village of Marnik who should be the symbol and the go-to person in the village of Marnik, who's the mayor. I still love you guys. Have a very happy holidays and everything. And the one nice thing about the Zoom meetings, sometimes I don't even have to wear pants. Have a good night.
Information I needed, but thank you. Okay, uh, nobody else? Okay, good. Report from the village manager. Uh, do you wanna give it, Danny?
Yeah. First item is, we file for the record the contract with White Men, Ostrom, and Hannah LLP. Second is the file for the record, the recordation of the Hillside Avenue Bridge, uh, which is required for pursuant to our agreement with the state. Third item, file for the record, our Curia system, our Curia alarm systems agreement. That's for alarm monitoring at 234 Stanley Avenue. And finally, file for the record, the Worcester County Snow and Ice Agreement.
Thank you, Dan. Minutes, commission boards and committees. Board of trustee work session of October 13, a regular meeting of September 29th and October 13th. Minutes of Board of Architecture Review meeting on September 7th. 17th, I'm sorry, 2020. As we were speaking to Halloween before, uh, there, there, there is no municipal law or prohibition against trick or treating. You know, if, if you were going to send your child out to trick or treating, take the precautions that the, you know, the CDC is recommending for everybody, make sure the child wears a mask, even if they have a mask on. I'm, I'm betting that there's gonna be a lot of folks who do not have their porch lights on this year because people, especially people up in age a little bit, are very afraid of exposure. I, I know some families are doing activities closer to home with families in their kind of pod. I, you know, it, it breaks my heart that, uh, the kids can't frolic and, uh, play like they used to. But I, I think there's gonna be a lot of people who keep their kids home. If you are trick or treating and you go to a house and there's already a group at the house, please wait until that group leaves. So as not to mix groups or mix pods, as it were. You know, and please, as always, be careful. It's getting dark early. It'll be, uh, really dark when the kids are up trick or treating. Please bring a light. Make sure the kids, if, uh, wear light colored clothes or something reflecting. Please, uh, use all common sense. Some hand sanitizer with you. And, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, we'll all have a safe Halloween and next year, things will go back to the way they were. In a lot of different ways. Alright.
Do we post the guidance on the website, the governor's guidance on the website? That was a nice, that orange thing that Kelly found.
Kelly, did you send that to Sally?
I don't know, but I can right now, I think.
Tomorrow on our website. From the governor's office. But, you know, be careful, please. Hopefully, everybody will have a good time anyway. Alright, folks, I need a motion to adjourn.
Wait, Tom, do we wanna deal with a movie?
What are we doing with the movie?
The request for the movie, we got a request. Um, we forgot something on the work session about the, the one Marnik, the, the, um, the one Marnik movie event. We were asked to approve a movie.
Why were we asked to approve the movie?
Because it has mature content and it's really about language and I just don't, I don't want, if, if we wait, the movie event is October, is November the 13th. And if we wait until the 9th, they've been advertising it. I think they just wanted to get our blessing that this was okay. It was, it was item, the, oh, item on the work session. And you know, we had such a busy meeting, we didn't get to that.
Yeah. Well, you know, the advertising, uh, true audiences.
Hmm, yeah.
Park. Somebody have any?
You know what? I, I can talk to, I can speak to this because, um, I spoke to Jason about this and they're gonna, adjust, first of all, the, the audio will be coming through an FM transmission. It won't be like blasting through speakers in Harbor Island Park. So no one will hear the violence. It's, it's, it's a, it's a tremendous documentary. I recommend it to people because it is tremendous. It's very powerful. But visually, there is a lot of graphic violence. Um, the screen will be turned in such a way that it won't be visible from Boston Post Road. They're showing it, you know, after dark. So, you know, we don't think there will be kids in the park. So, you know, I, I think there's little chance of a kid wandering upon this violent screen. And, and recognizing that drive-ins are a popular thing, the rec is, rec department is also gonna have a, a family friendly movie down at Harbor Island. That isn't a recreation department event. It's, it's a one Marnik event that's being held in Harbor Island and they're reimbursing the village for all expenses. But the village is going to also have a family friendly drive-in that hopefully families will come and enjoy. So.
Okay. Well.
The family movie's the next week.
Yeah.
The week before. The family movie's the week before.
Right.
I mean, I, I think we should do it. I just, we were asked and I don't wanna leave them hanging.
Okay, I'm fine with doing it.
I do. I do too, Nora. I, I also think we should do it. Um, you know, I, I-
I mean, I'm not sure it's even something we have to, right? Yeah, I just think it's a good, they- Well, they asked us to consider it and it was gonna be on the work session. I'm not sure we even would have had to move it to the regular session. They just wanted to make sure that we were all okay with this movie.
Right.
We're aware of it and we all, no one's, you know, stopping. I don't think we need to vote.
Okay, just, I just wanted to
Yep.
Make sure we've covered our bases.
Closing that circle.
You're welcome.
And you got something on work session? Will we please?
I just found that so moved.
One second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good night. Thank you for finding that, Kelly.